I should say that again in two weeks when we're actually voting. Should we redo that during that meeting too, or did this take care of it?
I'd be happy to repeat that.
Okay.
When time comes to vote yea or nay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the next item then. There are five items on this evening's consent agenda, and they are as follows. Resolution of the Morrisville Town Council authorizing the placement of the Gandhi statue on town property, Town Council June and July meeting minutes, resolution authorizing the sale and issue of two-thirds bonds, series 2024A and GO bonds, series 2024B, resolution approving advisory committee summer appointments, and resolution and capital project ordinance amendment authorizing the purchase of real property at 111 Skoggins Avenue. Would anyone like to remove anything from this? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Skoggins-Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretam-Garamella.
Oh, the mayor.
I'm recognizing her first.
No, I think you did not adopt the agenda yet.
I skipped something.
We have to adopt the regular agenda.
Okay, because I did the conflict of interest first, so I appreciate that. Okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
A move that we adopt this evening's agenda.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Rao, a second by Councilmember Robati. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. Thank you, Mayor Pretam. Appreciate it. It's the first time I've ever done that. Okay, so I said the five items on the consent agenda item, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Skoggins-Johnson at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull item 6D, resolution for approving advisory committee summer appointments for some questions and comments.
Okay. Would anyone like to pull any other item before that, before we entertain an adoption? Okay, I entertain adoption of the consent agenda without item 6D.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any votes in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. This time, I'd like to recognize Bianca McCain to address any questions Councilmembers Skoggins-Johnson has.
Yes, I'm here to address your questions.
Thank you so much for this process. It's so important that we have the voice of the public serve in our advisory committees, and it is not an easy decision to select from so many qualified individuals that we have, and their voices are all important. And we encourage people to remain engaged and actually attend. If they're not on the committee, they can also attend as a matter of the public. With this cycle, we have a process where, in order to be more efficient with our meetings, the balloting is outside of the meeting. We call it pre-balloting, and then we tally and have a motion in the public meeting to accept the balloting outcomes. In previous years, just for everybody's awareness, we had actually physically submitted ballots during a meeting, would tally them up, and determine the outcome, and then vote on that. So unfortunately, one of the councilmembers, Councilmember Robati, was not able to participate due to extenuating circumstances, and as a courtesy, I wanted to see if she wanted to submit a ballot, because she was unable to during the pre-balloting, or if she is okay with deferring to the current ballots that were submitted.
I appreciate that, and certainly, the fact that I wasn't able to vote this cycle has nothing to do with the quality of the applicants or with my appreciation of the advisory committees. I shared with council that there was a sudden death in my family 10 days ago. I really appreciate the opportunity to vote again, but to be honest with you, I'm fine this time around, sitting it out. I haven't had time to do any of the pre-work that always goes into these decisions, and I think it's just better if... I understand there are no ties, is that correct? There's no 3-3?
That is correct. There are no ties.
Okay, I appreciate the opportunity, but I'll pass. Thank you.
Very good. I just wanted to make sure that we extended an opportunity to Councilmember Robati in case she wanted to submit an application, but I'm okay to vote now at this time.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your feedback.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the... I guess I have to say exactly, the advisory committee and summer appointments.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Skoggins-Johnson.
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We are now at presentations. We have two presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation recognizing India Independence Day. Mayor Pretam-Garamella will read the proclamation and then ask representatives from BAPS and HSNC to come forward afterwards to receive it. Mayor Pretam.
Thanks, Mayor. Before I do that, I just wanted to know how the rotation is. We have a rotation that we follow for a proclamation, and I'm lucky to read this proclamation today. So I want to read a proclamation in recognition of Indian Independence Day, August 15, 2024. Whereas the multicultural people of Morrisville have a great tradition of celebrating significant milestones and events of historical importance, therefore, we are proud to celebrate Indian heritage during the 76th year of Indian Independence Day. And whereas the theme for the 76th Independence Day in India is nation first, always first, which is, which will be held as part of the events under Azadaki Amrit Mahatsa. And whereas in 1947, India proclaimed independence and became recognized as the Republic of India, marking the beginning of its identity as free and sovereign nation of the people. And whereas, as a growing democracy, India has proven to be courageous nations seeking to establish its basic fundamental principles, those same values upon which the United States was founded, freedom, opportunity, and justice. Whereas, the local community of the people in Morrisville who hail from India or have ancestral ties to India continuously demonstrate the greatness and beauty of their homeland. Their contribution and notably and reflect success in many areas, including education, medicine, science, technology, and retail industry. Now, therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize August 15, 2024 as Indian Independence Day, and encourage residents of all backgrounds to recognize the contributions made by the country and the people of India, and extend best wishes on commemorating that historic milestone of independence. Adopted 13th day, August 2024. I would call upon Viran Patel and Monaj Pandya to come on the stage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone of you want to talk anything?
This is indeed a great honor, to be honest, for the entire community here, and it's a pleasure to receive this. Thank you, Town, thank you, Sutis, thank you, Mayor, thank you, all Town Council members and staff for all your support always. And a grand celebration will happen on 17th of August, where we make like governor and governor candidates, and this will be done in coordination with our affiliated organization, Hindu Vikas, Hindu Vikas Mantra, so HCM does this, all does in a very big way, so you are welcome, and please attend, 10:30 would be the flag horse.
10:30 flag horse.
Thank you.
Okay, hold on. Can I have a... He didn't understand.
I just, I just had, I mean, Monaj Pandya basically added really good words for the Indian community, but I also want to thank, you know, Town Council, who has been our great partners with all of the needs and everything, all of what we need. Thank you so much.
Yeah, if you can get the council here to take a picture, that would be great.
Members of the community, want to come up too? You all want to? Okay.
Very good. How are you?
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else come? Any instrument?
See you guys here? There should be room for everybody.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think...
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next presentation is a proclamation recognizing Senior Citizens Day. Councilmember Robati will read the proclamation and ask Mary Fawcett, Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Director, to come forward with some other people to receive it.
Okay. Proclamation recognizing National Senior Citizens Day. Whereas initiated in 1988, National Senior Citizens Day is an annual celebration honoring the invaluable contributions, wisdom, and legacies of our senior citizens who have significantly shaped our society. And whereas, this day offers a special opportunity to express our gratitude and respect for the older generation, recognizing their achievements, sacrifices, and the wealth of experience they share with younger generations. And whereas, the Town of Morrisville deeply appreciates the contributions of its senior citizens, and is committed to fostering a community where they can thrive and feel valued. And whereas, Morrisville is dedicated to celebrating and honoring its senior citizen population through engaging events and activities at the Morrisville Senior Center, which promote a strong sense of community. Now, therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize August 21, 2024 as National Senior Citizens Day, and encourages the community to celebrate the contributions and achievements of our senior population. August 13, 2024, signed Mayor TJ Colley and Patricia Spillane, Town Clerk. Could Mary Fawcett and the members of the Senior Advisory Committee come up and accept the proclamation? Yeah, I'd like to give the four live opportunities to our senior center manager, Shalana Scott.
Hi, Shalana Scott here. I just want to invite everybody out on August 21st. It's National Senior Citizens Day, and we'll be having an ice cream social as well, so please come out and join us. It's gonna be lots of fun. Yes, so, yes, and you have to register, so please come out.
And the members of our senior advisory committee, let's press comments.
I'd like to say, first of all, I'd like to say thank God that he allows us to be seniors. That's the first thing. And thank you to the Town Council for acknowledging us, for, on behalf of all the seniors, not only of Morrisville, but the surrounding communities that do come and participate at the Morrisville Senior Center. We give you thanks.
And we're grateful. We have a lovely senior center. We have hopes for more, but we appreciate what we have.
Okay, those were two very nice recognitions. We appreciate everyone coming and joining us. This is one of the fuller audiences we've had, which is wonderful. We are now at public address. Town Clerk Spillane, has anyone signed up to speak in person?
We do not have anyone signed up for public comment.
Okay, is there anyone here who did not sign up but would like an opportunity to speak? So this is public address, this is not the public hearings, which are later. Okay, excellent, we'll go ahead and move on then. Tonight, we have three public hearings. The first public hearing is on the proposed amendment to the zoning map for HSNC, REZ 23-0014. At this time, we invite Josh Michael, Planner 2, to the podium to brief us on this matter. Mr. Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Town Council. So it's my pleasure to bring forward an application to amend the zoning map for various parcels along Clements Drive, Fairview Avenue, and Aviation Parkway to facilitate the expansion of the existing campus for the Hindu Society of North Carolina. HSNC is requesting a conditional zoning map amendment for the parcels outlined in red, which is approximately 21.86 acres in size and 19 separate parcels. The current zoning of the properties are nine which are residential neighborhood, nine which are residential transition, and one office institutional. The current land use plan is residential in place of worship, and applicant is proposing to rezone to conditional office institutional to facilitate the expansion of the HSNC campus. So again, this property is comprised of 19 parcels totaling approximately 21.86 acres, and the Wake County pin numbers here are associated with each party, with each property, sorry. The land use plan designates three of the existing parcels as low-density residential, one as neighborhood activity center, and the remaining 15 as institutional. The proposed zoning is conditional, office institutional, and the properties all reside within town corporate limits. For the surrounding properties, to the north, we have residential neighborhood preservation, single-family homes. To the east, we have industrial management. To the south, residential transition. And to the west, residential neighborhood preservation, which are single-family homes. So this map highlights what I've already mentioned concerning the future land use plan, and here you can see the designation of the subject properties, the vast majority being institutional, with those three properties adjacent to Fairview being the low-density residential. So there are 18 conditions that are being proposed with this rezoning, and they all pertain to everything from residential component to smart shuttle node, the traffic impact analysis, a traffic management plan, Fairview access, road improvements, and additional buffers. So if you'll bear with me, I'll probably read some of these in detail and perhaps surprise some of the other ones. Starting with the first one, which is pretty standard, and we'll move on to number two. Residential dwelling units will be limited to the area noted as priest guest residences on the sketch plan. Residential dwelling units will include a maximum of 20 dwelling units and will be limited to three stories in height. Dwellings may include a combination of the following: unglow court, duplex, multifamily, up to 12 dwelling units for multifamily, single-family attached, single-family detached, and/or pocket neighborhood configuration. If multifamily is constructed, it will be limited to 12 dwelling units of multifamily, and the remaining eight dwelling units will be comprised of a different type of housing. Residential dwelling unit shall be maintained and controlled by the place of worship and used only for priest, faith leaders, and guests. The final design will include one smart shuttle stop. The final location shall be reviewed and approved at site plan. These three identified parcels, which is the area depicted as priest guest residences and landscape areas, shall be used only for residential dwellings, landscape area, and stormwater control. The development will dedicate right-of-way and will either submit a payment-in-lie request or construct the western half of the ultimate cross-section of Aviation Parkway along the property frontage as shown on the Town of Morrisville CTP, adopted March 12, 2019, at the time of the first phase of development on the campus if step number U5811 has not begun construction. HSNC is participating in a joint TIA with the Town of Morrisville and Wake County. The Hindu Society of North Carolina will construct off-site improvements necessitated by this development as shown in Scenario 1 in the joint traffic impact analysis. And I might let the applicant team get into more details for some of this. For events anticipated to exceed 90% of onsite hard surface parking, or if traffic is anticipated to back up onto Aviation Parkway at HSNC driveway, the traffic management plan attached shall be adhered to. Any amendments to this plan shall be authorized only through the submission and approval of a revised plan by the Planning Director and Chief of Police. Fairview Avenue shall be used to provide emergency access to the main campus. The design of the emergency access drive shall be reviewed and approved by the Town at the time of site plan approval, and shall include a gate. Fairview Avenue shall only be used for accessing the priest guest residences and as emergency access to the main campus. The access point to the main campus should be gated to prevent everyday use. The priest guest housing shall only have direct access to the main campus via sidewalks, greenways, or other pedestrian-oriented forms of travel. An emergency access only easement shall be placed over the portion of the property assessing, accessing the emergency entrance along Fairview Avenue. HSNC will provide the southern half only of the full cross-section for a local street, but will widen Clements to 26 feet for fire access from Aviation Parkway to the first new driveway proposed on Clements Drive. All transportation improvements, excluding the potential traffic signal on Aviation Parkway, shall be installed concurrently with the first phase of development, or a payment-in-lie request shall be submitted. Combination of installments and payment-in-lie may be accepted if deemed appropriate by the town engineer. And the development will meet all driveway stacking requirements outlined in the UDO. Requirement for hard surface parking is required in UDO Section 5.10.5B, shall not be applicable during events requiring the implementation of the TMP. Parking for this development will be provided at the following rates. The initial phase will be 120% of the total spaces required by the UDO for each phase of the development, with the final phase being 100% of the UDO requirements. The parcels identified as these pens, which is that area again that's depicted as priest guest residence on the sketch plan dated July 30, 2024, shall provide a Type C Option 1 perimeter buffer against adjacent residential properties. The development will also provide a Type J Option 2 street yard buffer against Clements Drive. This Type J Option 2 street yard buffer will be enhanced beyond UDO requirements and will include the following: three shade trees per 100 linear feet, three understory trees per 100 linear feet, and a solid green, evergreen hedge, excuse me, at least three feet tall and two feet wide. And finally, the parcels identified as, these are the priest residence again on the sketch plan, shall adhere to the principal intensity and dimensional standards for RT residential transition district noted in the UDO. And the remainder of the development shall adhere to office institutional district standards. And of course, we'll have plenty of time to go over each one of those in detail as needed. So for the sketch plan here, you can see the two... Let's see if I can zoom in a little bit. You can see the two existing buildings here in the red, this one here, and the visitor center down here. The proposed buildings are in orange. The priest dwellings over here in yellow. And the purple is the circulation pattern with all the parking. We also have the smart shuttle node that's here at the main entrance off Aviation. And again, I'll let the applicant go into more detail on the sketch plan. The traffic management plan. So the traffic management plan was developed to address existing and future event traffic that frequently backs up and causes congestion on Aviation Parkway. This was reviewed by Special Event Permit Review Team, which was led by Transportation Planner 2 Caleb Allred. It included police and fire. Two circumstances for needing to use this traffic management plan. Number one, moderate events that are defined as events that are anticipated to or do exceed 90% of hard surface onsite parking or traffic backs up onto Aviation Parkway. Number two, events expected to meet number one and exceed 1,500 patrons must also provide off-site shuttles in addition to administering the rest of the TMP. And then this is just some real high-level aspects of that traffic management plan, pointing out a little bit of what was just noted there, but also emphasizing the regular meetings with event hosts, collaboration with Town of Morrisville Police Department, minimum of six for onsite management, minimum of six traffic control staff, use of walkie-talkies, structured parking flow with priority for rear middle lots, then overflow areas for the off-site parking and shuttle service implemented for large events with clear signage and shuttle routes, encouragement of carpooling and restriction on walking along Aviation Parkway, and for enforcement and adaption, continuous monitoring adjustments as necessary. And then, of course, any amendments to the TMP would require approval from the Planning Director and the Chief of Police. So we did present, the applicant team and staff presented to the Planning and Zoning Board on July 11. At that meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board voted for one in favor of approval of the requested zoning map amendment to conditional office institutional, conditioned on the dwelling units being a maximum of two to three stories in height. Other concerns voiced by PCB members included limiting multifamily to 12 units, limit of two to three stories for dwelling units, and additional buffering to mitigate residential concerns. As a result, we went, the applicant team and staff went back and reconfigured some conditions, and highlighted are the changes that were made after that meeting, which included limiting, Condition 2, limiting to three stories in height, and also limiting the multifamily to 12 dwelling units. Additionally, as I pointed out, the parcels that are next to the Fairview area, they provide a Type C Option 1 perimeter buffer against adjacent residential if residential is built there, which is above and beyond the Type J that would be required there. And as far as Clements, that they did do the Type J, but with the additional buffers, so that, so Type J would only be three shade trees per 100 linear feet, and they added the other two, the understory trees and the evergreen hedge. So staff recommends approval of the requested zoning map to conditional office institutional for the following reasons. The proposed conditional office institutional zoning district is compatible with surrounding zoning districts. The requested zoning map amendment would allow for development that is compatible with the developments in the surrounding area thereby resulting in a logical and orderly development pattern, and the requested zoning map amendment provides a religious organization help coordinating the respective expansion plan while ensuring impacts to surrounding uses are mitigated. while ensuring impacts to surrounding uses are mitigated. And we also have a presentation from the applicant team as well as Transportation Planner Two Caleb Alred and the Chief of Police, Chief Acosta here as well for any questions.
If we can hear the presentations and then we'll have our questions en masse at the end. So if you want to bring up the next presenter?
Yes.
Hello again, welcome.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Melissa Brand. I'm a landscape architect with Kim Lee Horn and here representing Hindu Society tonight, also joined by Kevin Dean, who completed the traffic impact analysis, if there are any specific questions about that. But I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to present to you. First, I just want to give a high level overview of what HSNC is. They were established in North Carolina in nineteen seventy-six with the key purpose of providing a place to worship, practice Hindu religion, and provide community support. HSNC currently has around three thousand members today and they're open and welcome to all different religions and faiths to join. They also support Morrisville in several different ways by organizing many religious, cultural, linguistic, social, educational, and spiritual events while promoting India's rich history or heritage. And I just want to give a very quick overview of some of the examples of activities that they organize to support the community. First, HSNC purveyor prepares fresh vegetarian food every Saturday and Thursday for shelters, rescue missions, and schools in the Triangle Region. In the last two years alone, they've completed over two hundred thousand meals completely free of charge. Medical camps are also hosted, so an example of that would be like COVID vaccination clinics. In the last few years, they did host those and that resulted in fifteen thousand vaccines being given. They also have yoga and meditation camps conducted several times a year and these are open to the general public and have a significant amount of community participation. The facilities at HSNC also host multiple faith and religious organizations as well as having a very active senior club and youth camps. They also organize camps with the Indian Embassy to help with renewal of passports, visas, and other services. And this is all in addition to just being a place of worship. They also organize social awareness and family support programs. They're very active in funding, fundraising for natural disaster relief and they host several art, cultural, and musical events throughout the year. They also provide a location for hosting private events such as weddings and also local community events. And, you know, this is just a short summary, but HSNC is a lot more than a place to practice Hindu religion. Truly is an asset to the Triangle Region and the residents of Morrisville can benefit from have, really benefit from having HSNC in the community. So as Josh shared with us, this is the existing campus that you see on the screen here. It's located at three oh nine Aviation Parkway. It's roughly a mile from where we are right now. The existing site is just under nine acres and it includes an existing temple that you can see right here adjacent to Aviation Parkway. There's an existing activity center building here in the rear of the site and then there are two existing priest houses right here. A brief history of HSNC, they were founded in nineteen seventy-six, as I said, and by nineteen eighty-six, they had outgrown their first location in Raleigh and decided to move to Morrisville. That's when they built the existing temple over off of Aviation Parkway. And by nineteen ninety-nine, they realized they already had the first need to expand. So that was when they constructed the activity center in the rear of the site. And this new building was then expanded in twenty sixteen to add an additional seven thousand square feet of just classroom and multipurpose space. But with that first expansion of building that activity center, that's when they really saw the need for the future to continue to expand. So at that point, they really started these efforts that have brought us here tonight. In two thousand, they began acquiring the surrounding properties in the area and they've been doing that for the past, I mean, twenty plus years at this point, just buying up the additional properties. So in that twenty years, they did purchase an additional sixteen properties with the goal of expanding the facility to support the needs of the growing community. And by twenty twenty-two in September, that's when we had our first meeting with town staff to discuss moving forward with this rezoning request. So this map you see here does illustrate the total area under consideration for rezoning. We have the three original parcels in the middle there and then the sixteen additional parcels that were acquired between two thousand and twenty twenty-one. Total acreage is twenty-one point eighty-six acres and it does include properties on Aviation, Clements Drive, and Fairview Avenue. As I mentioned, HSNC did begin coordinating with town staff in September of twenty twenty-two. We made our first formal submittal for the rezoning request in October of twenty twenty-three. Following that, we did hold a neighborhood meeting at the Cedar Fort Community Center in November. This was not a meeting that was required by the rezoning, but rather HSNC just wanted to invite the neighbors to meet with the team, learn about the future plans, and to solicit feedback from neighbors to help guide the design as we move forward. We did send out sixty-seven invitations to the neighbors surrounding the site and had roughly ten property owners attend. All dates after the November neighborhood meeting or meetings directly with the Town of Morrisville that are listed here. That includes town staff, like planning, transportation staff, but even the police department. As you can see here, we've coordinated with them extensively to prepare the application you're reviewing tonight. And Josh did give us a high level overview of the concept plan, but I can't answer any questions you have and I'll just give you a little more in detail description of some of the plans that we have here. And we have Clements on the top of the screen here and then Aviation on the right side. We are proposing keeping the driveway on Aviation, but we're also adding a second driveway here just south of that that you can see. That's going to be a right and right out driveway. There will also be two driveways on Clements Drive, one about halfway down and then one at the cul-de-sac. As Josh mentioned, we will be providing an enhanced buffer on Clements Drive that goes above and beyond current UDO standards. We do have the two existing buildings that are going to remain. So right here is where the existing temple is. We do have plans to convert that to a visitor's center. And then you have the existing activity center in the back here. There are plans to expand the activity center. So the proposed buildings are in the light orange shade. We have the activity center expansion and the community center here and the Yagneshala here off of the visitor's center. The new buildings do have a height maximum of forty feet for most of them with the temple building in the middle there, which I realize I skipped over. That is centrally located right here and that is proposed to have a maximum height of a hundred feet. We have the vehicular circulation routes shown with this teal dashed line around the site with the light purple shaded areas being the proposed parking as well as the main pedestrian circulation routes are in this light pink dashed line here throughout the campus. As Josh mentioned, there are, there is a small residential component here in the rear of the site. This is approximately two acres in size. Height is being limited to three stories maximum and may include a variety of different housing types, including bungalow court, duplex, multifamily, single family, or a pocket neighborhood. If multifamily is constructed, we are limiting that to a maximum of twelve units of the twenty proposed. And we do have some precedent imagery later on in the presentation to show you the ideas we have in mind around that. We are also proposing additional buffering around the priest housing here. So the UDO requires a ten foot wide buffer. We are proposing twice that as a twenty foot wide buffer. The priest housing will have direct access to Fairview Avenue, but the main HSNC campus will not have direct access. It will only be accessible by emergency vehicles off of Fairview. Also, speaking of Fairview, you can see this design proposed right here. That is a cul-de-sac. HSNC is proposed paying for the design and construction of a cul-de-sac at the end of Fairview. Today, it's just a dead end and we are upgrading that. So right now, if emergency vehicles needed to access the end of that street, there's really nowhere for them to turn around and we'll be providing the cul-de-sac to enable them to do that. There are also many outdoor areas proposed, which are shown by the green areas on the screen. We have a festival lawn in the middle here, directly adjacent to the temple and that's really to be used for outdoor events. There's also a recreation lawn proposed using this dark green shade here and that's for both active and passive outdoor recreation. And then there are several other landscape areas indicated by this light green shade. That totals approximately seven and a half acres of the campus. So within this seven and a half acres indicated by this green shade on the screen, approximately three and a quarter of those acres or fifteen percent of the overall site will include existing trees to be saved. And then finally, I did want to point out down here, just off of Fairview Avenue, we are showing constructing the greenway that's proposed in this general zone of Morrisville. This will be the Fairview Greenway indicated on the Greenway Plan. So we are constructing that on the site, which will give access to Fairview Avenue. I did just want to give some additional context around a few of these key conditions that we proposed. We are proposing only up to twenty units for residential. If multifamily is constructed, only twelve of those will be allowed to be multifamily. We've also limited height to three stories based on feedback from the planning board. Also, these residential dwelling units will only be used for priests, faith leaders, and guests. And the real reason for these, HSNC hosts several events or several priest, religious leaders, cultural, and social performance artists, yoga and spiritual gurus, and language teachers throughout the year. And many of these visitors are present on campus simultaneously. And they cannot be temporarily housed in hotels due to religious rituals, food requirements, and cultural practices. So this really results in a need for additional housing onsite beyond the housing provided for the full-time priests. And this is really just to accommodate not only the growing needs of HSNC, but also their existing needs today. It's really something that they can't fulfill right now. Also, we understand, you know, traffic is a concern. So condition number eight does speak to a traffic management plan that we have proposed. When we first submitted the rezoning request and we're working with town staff, they did request that we put together a traffic management plan for the future condition that we're proposing, which we have done. We agree that that is needed, but we have also gone above and beyond that and we proposed a traffic management plan for the existing campus as well. So that can be implemented today to help with traffic concerns. Condition number fifteen does speak to providing additional parking in the initial phases of development. The UDO requirement for a place of worship is one space per every hundred square feet of assembly space and we'll basically be providing twenty percent above that. So that would be one point two parking spaces per every hundred square feet of assembly space in the initial phases of development. Also, condition sixteen, this is the buffer around the priest housing. As I said, you know, we're basically doubling that with a twenty foot wide buffer. It'll have six shade trees and twenty-five shrubs per every hundred linear feet. And then condition seventeen speaks to the buffer on Clements Drive. We are enhancing that buffer with additional plantings there. Here is some precedent imagery of the priest housing that, you know, we have in mind. So you can see some single family, bungalow court, town homes. The detailed plan has not been developed for this area yet. We still need to get survey and get through these initial steps first, but we do envision this being similar to what might be placed there. Also, with the traffic management plan, we're happy to answer any questions that you have about this. But essentially, this is the plan for the existing campus that would be implemented immediately for larger events that are expected to exceed ninety percent of the on-surface hard parking for the area. And then, once we get to fifteen hundred attendees or over, this would be still utilized, but we would also have offsite parking and shuttles to those locations. And then the future traffic management plan is very similar. You can see, you know, traffic control officers are indicated throughout the site. And then, once we would get to two thousand attendees, we would expect to implement offsite shuttles at that point for the future condition as well. So again, happy to answer any questions that you guys have, but appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight and thank you so much.
Pass it back to Mr. Michael for the next presenter. Did you have another presenter or is it question time?
We do not have another presenter. We are happy to entertain any questions from staff or the applicant team at this stage.
I don't see anyone just now, so I'll go first if that's okay. If we could go to slide fourteen.
From the staff or?
The one that we just saw. I just have one little concern insofar as the existing residents. I understand that there's been some feedback that there's been some detriment to their quality of life because of large events in that area and we want to make sure that that's addressed. So I was hoping that we could get a commitment from HSNC to look into making that a little bit better because I know they've tried to make it better, but there's still issues there. So if you make this smaller again and go over to the left, like having a traffic control officer at the beginning of Fairview to eliminate people driving in and dropping off, that was one of the larger concerns that I could be, could probably be addressed through having more personnel there. Because I know it's a public street, so there's limitations on what we could do, but just like restricting the pedestrians on Aviation, we'd like to see if there's some way to restrict the usage of Fairview for events. I understand they need it for the priests and the guests, but during events, I don't think it's appropriate to use Fairview as a drop-off place, for example. So that's just something I want to share with the community and hope that that can be addressed because the quality of life of our existing residents is as important as, as we expand to serve more people. And I agree with everything that was said that HSNC is a great asset to our community, as is all the people who attend there. So I just wanted to share that little bit of feedback as we go forward. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Abadi. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robi.
The on the same slide, the light blue dotted line that goes all the way down the right-hand side, that's indicated to be a 10-foot wide side path. Is that, is that the same thing as a sidewalk?
Yes.
Because I, one of the things that really concerns me about this area specifically is that people walk along the side of the road and everyone's walking along the sidewalk. Dwelling, the hole at the top, at the part where they are at. So I'm wondering if there's a possibility, you don't have to answer this now, but I'm wondering if there's a possibility for some type of partnership in town. Or maybe we could get that sidewalk extended all the way up so that we leave the property. This looks like it just goes straight in front of the property. And if we could, we could go all the way up to that light, to that traffic light.
To where the future traffic light?
No, the traffic light is right outside of the green light. Right where?
To the north or to the south, the one at 54?
So I guess it's 54, the traffic light where the entrance to the block is.
I gotcha. Understood.
So I think we could break the sidewalk pretty much and to where the opposite entrance to the block.
Okay.
And the other thing was, I noticed in the staff presentation that there was a reference to prohibiting walking along the street or something like that. I can't remember exactly what the verbiage was, but I was just wondering. I was very interested in how, what you meant by that and how you planned to. What your plan was there.
Yeah, so let's see, let me find my presentation in here. Here we go. So one of the, with the off-site shuttle parking, which is proved to be a sound strategy to mitigate some of the circling traffic. The off-site shuttle, sometimes if they're, if they use, let's say Cedar Fork District Park, which we are encouraging the applicant team to seek private partnerships. But sometimes with those closer locations, like Cedar Fork District Park, that creates an opportunity for people to get dropped off and cross the street. Because it, it looks like it's pretty close, for all intents and purposes, it really is. So that does create obstacles for police and possibly a scenario where there could be an accident or, God forbid, somebody gets hit. So enforcement of that, if there is on those occurrences where there are shuttles, that would also require police management as well. So, so Morrisville Police would be involved in that if it gets to that level of off-site shuttles. As far as if there are remote parking opportunities and people are crossing the road, regardless, that would be incumbent on, on the applicant team to monitor that. And so we have requested and they have put in the conditions that there will be constant feedback and tutorials and with, with staff, with police to, to enhance this. Because this is kind of the ground stage now that there is a traffic management plan, as well as a future traffic management plan to learn from this. So I think that hopefully, and no one can predict the future, that that will be something that over time will be ameliorated.
My last question was, do you know what the objection was of the person on the Planning and Zoning Board that did not vote for, to go forward with the plan? Was there something specific that wasn't addressed in the, in the update or?
I don't, I couldn't say exactly what that member objected to. I think that the, the points that were recognized and acknowledged by the applicant team were, were expressed that those would be reconciled. So I, I'm wondering if, and I don't want to speak for that member.
Right.
But he, that, that member did not explicitly state, this is why I'm not voting for that.
Okay. I, I know you've been in close contact with the police about the parking and the walking situations. I also did just want to mention that I went to the November 7th community meeting. And I, there was a, there was a 3D rendering of the site and the plans. And the, the sketches just do not do it justice. It was stunning. I'm really excited about this project. So thank you very much for all your work on it.
Mayor for Tim Garamella, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you. This particular slide, when, okay, before even I go, excellent presentation. And looking at the timelines from 2022 to 2024, I think it's a long time in coming. And I want to basically say kudos to the entire team who worked to get this and our staff. Because this is not an easy place with the traffic management. And I'm glad, together, they have come up with a plan of action. Said that, point 15, we say initial phase is providing 120% of the spaces. How many spaces are we talking about here?
Well, currently, H S N C has approximately 365 spaces. So let's say they expand and do another, what the, the U D O would require based on a building being built or an expansion that requires 100 more parking spaces. So they would need to do 120 at that level. So that's just saying that they're going to go with each new phase of development. They're going to go 20% beyond what the U D O requires, just to ensure that there is enough space, parking space.
Yeah, the reason I ask that, like, you know, if you go on one of the slides, they're already saying how much is each of the buildings, right? They have given the plan, like, so you sum up everything. Can't you guys tell me, like, how many parking lots that would contribute to, you know? Kevin or someone can tell in a heartbeat.
I can. Yeah, I'll let Melissa speak for that.
This is a good question, and it is a little complicated to answer for a few reasons. So in Morrisville, you guys have the parking requirements for a place of worship to be one space per every 100 square feet of assembly space. So we do have square footages, maximum square footages proposed for the different building types. You're correct. But at this point, we don't have those building footprints developed or the plans. So we don't know how much specifically is going to be considered assembly space. The best way I can give you a rough idea of what it might end up being, just hypothetically at this point, because we haven't developed plans. If you total up all the maximum square footages listed on the sketch plan today, that totals about 116,000 square feet. That's the absolute most that could ever be built here. And if we, just using rough math, assumed that 70% of that square footage would be assembly space, I think that's a high estimate. But we have to use something, right? So if we moved forward with that, then that would result in roughly 800 parking spaces being required on the site. Does that give you an idea?
That gives me a good understanding. The reason I say, if you can bring up the slide where the plan is. So here in this plan, I see is the parking is only on one side. Is there any other parking on that? Like, can the 800 fit in here?
So right now, with all the purple areas is what we've assumed can definitely be counted as parking. We haven't done a full, we don't have a full survey. We haven't done like grading plans or anything like that that might provide some constraints. But I feel confident that the purple areas could be achieved. I think that if we measure this based off of, you know, how much space you need to put a parking space in it, what's shown on the screen is roughly between 650 and 700 parking spaces. So our ability to achieve the parking would basically limit our ability to build out the square footage.
So is there any constraint to add more parking, especially where the south landscape area is, you know?
So. So like over here?
No, either there or like run or, run or the one on the top, anywhere. So that, I, I mean to say, I'm a member of H S N C. I go there all the time, and the community is growing. All H S N Cs can say, we have an event. You can get 500 or 5,000. It depends on the day, it depends on what the event is. So I just want to ensure that we are sufficiently padded. 800 is excellent, because right now you're talking 365 spots. So it's almost like two and a half. And that will significantly reduce the number of, it'll take a lot of more cars and also like reduce the traffic. So I just wanted to see if there are any overflow on grass kind of a parking, if it is possible, just so that everyone wants to be there. And the other question I have is regarding the Bearcat, right? So are we going to put a sidewalk from that Bearcat? The blue dotted line is the walkway, right, side path?
That's great, yeah.
Okay. And how much, so do we have a sidewalk going from the Bear Walk to Cotton's Place yet or no? Is there any like orphan sidewalks in the middle?
I don't think that, I think there would be a gap at some point, yes. And we were actually talking about this earlier this week. Another thing to consider is the Greenway extension that we're building. There's still a tiny gap in between what we would build and the rest of the Greenway that does also go to Cotton Place. And if that were filled in, but we don't control that property, unfortunately. But that would be a great alternative to walking on aviation as well.
Yeah, and that is, it's nothing to do with H S N C because by right, they can only build what is there facing. And it's not right to ask them to build there or this one. That's, that's not their purview. But I just wanted from a staff point of view, how much is the gap in between? Because satellite parking you have close by or far, people don't care. You know, they will come, they know Cedar Fork is the closest place, they will park it, period. So the only thing is, what is the safety of them? So if we can, you know, have that as a priority, as we had the church street sidewalk, which, you know, people were walking with no sidewalk either, that would be a good because it's not just H S N C events we do there. We do on Cedar Fork, we do the Holy and Diwali and July 4th. So it goes mutual for the parking that they could use on July 4th here or other events here, and vice versa. So pedestrian safety, if we can do something in our plans, you know, more, it would be really helpful, as more directed towards our staff than, than you guys. Because you cannot control the crowd. They will come no matter what, what is the best way of safely going to that. And overall, it's an excellent plan, and I'm excited. And it's a long way in coming and a lot of effort that has gone into it. That's all from me now, thank you.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Skraggus Johnson, please.
I think following up on Mayor for Tim's comments, I mean, I think that might, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I have concerns about traffic, but I think most of the, all of those have been addressed. I think it's just a matter of working through it. And I really want to thank the H S N C for all that they do. And I think this project, as has been said, it's been a long time coming. I guess my concern is the parking. I mean, I like the 800 spots, but I'm reminded, I know it was a different expansion, but that's, I mean, Ryan Temple on Aviation had an expansion. And shortly thereafter, they much outgrew with what outparking they allocated. And I can't even remember when the last expansion was. There were two separate expansions. So I think that's just the concern, is just to make sure that there's enough parking to project. I know that, I don't know, I see such an argument in the audience when he initially presented this, he talked about, you know, how the community has outgrown so much what it is today, right? But we can't project how many more people from the Hindu faith or Indian community are going to be coming in the next three to four years. I mean, there's 60 people a day coming in to Wake County, right? So just, I, I think it's always safer to plan for more than, than you have. Because that's my only concern. I'd hate to approve it and then three years later, we find out, oh, we, we didn't. I think that's what the issue is.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm in the same, I, I, I'm just trying to say.
Well, I'm not saying that you're trying to say that, but I'm just saying.
No, like maximize as much as parking is, that's all I'm saying. You know, if, and plus, by U D O standards, you have so much. It is what it is. But knowing this area, knowing what it is, having more in-house is always helpful.
And I'll briefly respond to that comment. One of the beauties of the applicant team offering not just a future traffic management plan, but an existing traffic management plan, is we do get to learn as we go when it's, H S N C is still in this nascent phase of just having two buildings. And I think that's going to give, that's going to feed a lot of our answers as we move forward and what works, what doesn't work, and, and the ability to amend the traffic management plan with the approval of the Chief of Police and the Planning Director.
Thank you. Councilmember Skraggus Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank the applicant for all of their work over the last several years. Is a dream being realized, if you will? Because I know what good community partners they've been with the town over the years. And this is an exciting project. And it, it's an honor to kind of review this. With that said, I echo the concerns of my fellow council members about parking and access and so forth. So I think they've covered it a good job. While looking at the sketch plan, I see that there are three access points for flow of vehicles and other traffic. Clement's Drive and Aviation has two points of access. Aviation does get very burdened during events today. And we only have a smaller footprint for the H S N C. So I'm glad to see that Clement's Drive is, is added into that. Also, with Fairview, there is a lot of potential pressure, but it looks like with the turnaround, that will only be for emergency purposes, which we hope is not used very often at all. Safety is so important. But that will also help being good neighbors to the adjacent properties which are residential. So it's, it's a careful balance between very vibrant, active area and being good neighbors. So I also appreciate the residents as being in the back where there are more residential properties as well. So it's more cohesive and aligned with that. I did have a question about the height of the temple. I know it's 100 feet. So the community center, how high is the current community center? To me, it's very high, but I'm sure it's not 100 feet.
That is a good question. I don't have that number on the top of my head right now. I will say, we have limited all the buildings to a height of 40 feet. So I believe it is under that, the existing building is. And the only building that would be above that would be the temple.
So the temple is 100 feet according to the U D O, but probably also due to FAA regulations?
We have not explored that, but yeah, I would anticipate that that would limit us as well.
Okay, because I just wanted to confirm that we're not violating any FAA flyover. Because we are close to the airport, as we know, every so often. But if you could confirm that that is in alignment with the FAA requirements for that area and just give me, just to follow up as to what the current height is, that'd be helpful for information. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Fender, and then Councilmember Johnson, please.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions on the buffers. The first one, you said it was type C. And what is the depth of that?
That one would be 20 feet.
Because I thought, for one of these, you said it was going to be twice what was required?
That's right. So I believe in coordinating with town staff, originally around the priest housing, what would be required there would be a type J buffer, which is 10 feet wide. We're proposing doing a type C buffer. We're proposing doing a type C buffer, C option one specifically, which would increase it to twenty feet wide, which is twice the width.
All right, and then for the buffer that's on the other side of the property, that's type J.
Yes, ma'am.
So is there any way to have the same type of buffer along there or are you limited by space?
I think we are limited by space there, and that's not something that I went into in a lot of detail at all for that, but I, it's a good question. Clement's Drive today, it would need to be improved based off the current condition and what is needed out there. And we're having to improve it up to an additional width just for fire truck access. We have proposed doing all of that widening on our side of the street. So typically when a road's widened, you would go from the center line outward. We don't want to impact the neighbors on the north side of Clement's negatively, so we have proposed widening it all on our side to offset that. So because of that, we've added additional plantings, more than would be typically required on that buffer, just to provide some more dense screening in the area.
Yeah, and I appreciate that design. I'm just wondering if it's gonna be enough.
And Councilmember Fender, if I can chime in as well, if the rezoning passes and they get to site review plan, there are additional perimeter offers that would be perimeter screening that would be required between vehicular areas, which obviously that is a vehicular area on the HSNC site as a residential street. So those are extra measures that we also have that here for screening. And that's comprised of a combination of trees, evergreens, shrubs, berms, walls and fences that form a continuous screen along the perimeter of the vehicle use area.
So is that part of the UDO?
Yes.
Where, where in the UDO is, so this is an additional requirement? Okay.
Yeah, that's five point twelve point four.
Say that again?
Five point twelve point four.
And that would require?
Additional screening between vehicular use areas and residential streets.
So will that be essentially the same space? This, the space there toward the north that's real?
Between Clement's Drive and the vehicular use area that's denoted on the sketch plan.
Okay. But then what about, so would it, would the buffer be all along Clement's Drive?
Yes, essentially.
Okay. And, all right, that, that addresses my concern. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So I love talking about the, the past, and I was on council when the existing Activity Center was built, the original Activity Center. And I've had the pleasure of watching not only this community grow, but watching this facility grow. So I'm not surprised either that we're here tonight, looking at a huge expansion, really a, a huge undertaking to enhance this facility and to enhance what the Hindu Society of North Carolina provides to the community and to all of us, quite frankly. So I, I do have a couple of questions, and I know everyone has, has kind of touched on a lot of good things, parking, traffic, you know, how we're, how are we gonna get in and out and get folks in and out safely? The, the, the existing facility shows like a landscaping area now, so that's new. So you're gonna take away some of that existing parking lot, I would assume, because that doesn't exist today.
It would just, the parking would be reconfigured basically and expanded.
Okay, and that was gonna be, so the parking lot is being expanded further? And then I see there's that landscape area there, and you probably said this, Melissa, and I missed it, but this particular landscaping area on the other side of the parking lot is not gonna be programmed. That is gonna be left as just a landscape area.
Are you talking about this one right here?
I am.
Yeah, so that one, that part of the site is an important piece. That is the lowest elevation on the entire property. So a lot of that will be maintained as existing landscape, we're assuming at this point, mostly likely along the perimeters, but then that is the place that a stormwater pond would need to go to address, you know, stormwater requirements that the town has.
Okay, that, that's actually, and there'll be landscaping around that and.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that, that, so I guess where I'm going is the neighbors on Fairview are obviously concerned. I mean, something new is coming and they want to understand, and they also want to make sure that the impacts are, are at least thought about and mitigated to the best that we can. So that actually, so that will probably always be some kind of open space then.
Yeah, we have basically, I believe there's a condition that said that's only gonna be used for landscape area or stormwater control measures. So there won't be any sort of building development in that zone right there.
Okay, good. And then, and I'm focused on this area, obviously, the emergency vehicle only, tell me what that's gonna look like and who's gonna manage that, because that, that is obviously a concern of the neighborhood too.
Yeah, absolutely. So we have proposed putting a gate there so that you would not be able to drive a vehicle between Fairview Avenue and the main HSNC campus, because we don't want that accessible by vehicles. But when coordinating with the Fire Department, they did say it was important to still maintain emergency access there. So there will be a special gate with like a Knox box fixture so that they can still get in and out anytime they ever need to.
Okay, that's perfect, okay, thank you for that. And then another concern that came up was lighting. So is, now that the parking lot is moving a little bit, shifting a bit, there'll be additional lighting and maybe enhanced lighting? Tell me what the lighting, what the lighting plan is, if you, if you've gotten that far.
We haven't gotten that far at this point, but our intent is just to meet UDO standards for parking lot lighting in this zone. Honestly, the parking lot's generally staying in about the same location, and with the additional buffering we're doing, especially around the priest residences and such, and then that's also why we added the additional buffering on Clement's Drive, just to help with any sort of lighting concerns.
Okay, and then as far as the, the priests and I know you, the priest residents, and I know you, you've said you really haven't gotten far on that yet, but I would, that's of a concern to, in the area, and, and because these are all single-family homes, I guess I would, I would ask and request that any, any of the multifamily maybe be shifted further away from the single family. And if there's gonna be bungalows or cottages, you know, maybe that, maybe there's some thought there about how that's all laid out so that the existing residents behind the property and then of course to the side, you know, that they're, that they're taken into consideration and their impact is taken into consideration. And I, and I appreciate the buffer. I appreciate the double, you know, enhancing the buff, the buffer.
Yeah, no, we're definitely keeping those things in mind as we look forward. Something to just make sure everybody's aware of, if in Morrisville, like with a single-family home or even like a townhome, you do have to have direct access to a right-of-way. So that, basically, we're pretty much forced to do what you're requesting anyway. Like if we were to do multifamily, it would make sense to have it more in the back, like in this zone right here, further from that direct access to right-of-way. And then if we had like single-family homes, those would need to be closer to Fairview.
Okay, okay, that, okay, that's all really helpful to share with the, with the neighborhood and the residents that are a little concerned. Thank you for that. And then just my last question about the parking. I see where you have the, the purple, it looks purple to me, I don't, whatever, where you talk about surface parking, just as it goes around the perimeter, is that like parallel parking or?
No, that's ninety-degree, like standard parking, just like the parking lot right out here.
Got it, okay. So it really, there's a lot more there than it's depicted on this little tiny purple line.
It's hard to realize scale with a drawing like this, but yeah, there, there's a good amount of parking all around the circulation routes of the facility.
And, and I'm sorry, and then one last question. So the other landscaping areas that you have around, those are all kind of buffer areas as well?
Yeah, so the landscaping area shown, the idea is those would be either the required perimeter buffers or like tree save areas, just natural green space in general, just because, you know, we don't want everything to just be built out and be a parking lot. We really hope for those natural areas as well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, we've all had an opportunity, but I'll recognize Mayor Fortem Garamella, who says he has another point, and then we still have our public hearing to do.
I wanted to ask one question. I think the amount of conditions that we have put, and I've gone through a lot of rezonings, I think this is the maximum number of restrictions or conditions we have put. And I'm very grateful that HSNC has satisfied. It's not like we're cutting corners here or anything. It is a full-blown conditions with the, the traffic plans and everything is excellent. I wanted to ask, what is town getting out of it in terms of dollars in the road construction on Clement's and the sidewalk? Those are heavy investments that HSNC is doing. I don't see any value put there. I would, next time I would request that to be put there, because that's a lot of money for the road that is getting put, and that is not showcasing anywhere. And also I wanted to ensure that it's on scale, if I can get it, because that's the question, like, you know, Liz asked, is it like a parallel parking or that kind of a thing? If anything that I can get to scale, it's useful, especially if you couldn't go down the plan. I know it's not so, for example, the Festive Lons, how much is it? One acre, one and a half acre? I don't know, I'm just looking at a plan as concept, you know? So how much is this parking lot? Is it like two acres or three acres of this green area? So anything, if I can get some, you know, how much area that is, because that's where we are doing the town, town center. So I want to see how much green space is it? So they calculate and they put the values there. That would be very, very useful next time when you guys come, but, and also I just strongly feel with many of the rezonings, this is like a nonprofit rezoning compared to other commercials who come and do it. They put the dollar and cents of how much improvement that they're doing for the town. And I see that is missing here, and that should be reflected correctly. That's all, thank you.
Yeah, I would just, as my second, like maybe an overlay of the existing to show this, but I mean, seeing the visitor center and the existing Activity Center and the parking lot, it's all mostly the same, but a lot of the expansion is to the north where they're letting people park already. So I thought that was interesting. But this time with the council's agreement, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and do that. One thing I would like to say, however, is that I believe we have a lot of sign, people signed up. So we want to hear from all our residents and our stakeholders, and to respect everyone's time, if you have signed up and what you were going to say has already been said, perhaps just say that, okay, it's already been said, or pass your turn. You don't need to stay a full three minutes if it's just in support, or if one of the early speakers is in a position to say, and everyone else who agrees with me, just go ahead and stand up or something like that. But we want to hear from everyone who wants to share their thoughts, especially new thoughts. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Town Clerk Spillane to let us know who signed up for public hearing.
Thank you. We have fourteen individuals that have signed up to speak this evening on this matter.
Okay, so if the first three could line up along the wall, I'm gonna ask each speaker to go ahead and say your name and your residential address for the record. Then you'll have up to three, you'll have three minutes, and the timer will go off at, at the end of three minutes, and I'll ask you to finish that last thought when it beeps. So I don't want to interrupt anyone, but if you have additional thoughts, please feel free to email us your thoughts. And if this public hearing goes again in two weeks, I want to let you know that you get to speak once at a public hearing. So if you speak tonight, you would not speak in two weeks if it's still open. Thank you very much. And this is a one-way communication. You can't ask questions, we're not gonna answer questions, just share your thoughts, staff, and we will hear it, as will the audience. So the first three speakers, please.
Thank you. Please forgive me, I'm having a little tough time with the handwriting, and I also beg your forgiveness if I get the pronunciations of anyone's name incorrect. I believe the first three individuals are Ms. Sharma Menoi. Ah, thank you, I apologize. The next speaker I have is Dosia Peoti. I do need help, and I'd be very grateful.
What, what call? Third one, Ramesh Thora. I'm coming.
I might just have you hang on to that and help me out.
I'll, I'll say my name.
Okay, thank you so much. Yes, you just will announce, announce your name and your address, and we will start the conference. Thank you.
My name is. My name is Saruk Sharma, and my address is in Ramakot, Morrisville. And I am a founder for the Hindu Society. We established the Hindu Society nineteen eighty, nineteen seventy-six, and we registered that time, and then we, Morrisville, we have in nineteen eighty-five. We came here, buy a land and build a temple, and always these people, you people always help us, and that's why we established here, and now it's growing big. So now we want more space because lots of people come, and we like to help to everybody, all, they are one member for the people. So thank you so much. We are working all together, and this is for everyone. Everybody can come, and the society can serve all these things, you know? Healthcare, before when we came here, we used to go in everybody's house, give a healthcare paper, please come, anytime they need help, because all we are together here. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Sharma, as we call her. Thank you, council members, thank you, staff, for giving this opportunity. Excellent job, Josh and Melissa for presenting. I see a lot of surprises when you read condition. Yes, these are the maximum conditions, but we understand they are required for the safety and for the traffic arrangements. So it's our commitment, and we want to get it done this properly. In fact, this is our commitment and promise to the neighborhood also that we would like, you know, this gets an opportunity that we are formalizing it. We are putting it in a proper shape, all the land, so this will help everybody, to be honest, to, to cater to the growing requirements of this campus. Not only we are doing this, but our trustees and our board has also amended the constitution to support this youth center. We would like to model it like in YMCA, where we can get a professional staff to do it. And the best part of it is our twenty percent board seats would be reserved to the youngsters to whom you're going to listen. So we want to get US-born, US-raised kids, youth to govern this campus, to meet their requirements, not only the spiritual aspect of it. I know Melissa said multiple events, but our events are primarily for well-being of the community, for the social requirements of the community, for the medical requirements of the community, it's just to make them happy. We want to make community happy so that people, all the families can enjoy this and they can have a better life. Morrisville is a place. Morrisville is a place, and everyone asks me, and every weekend I'm sitting there, and they want, if Morrisville can buy more land, they can build houses here. And they want, they don't want to go to Apex, they don't want to go to Fuquay, they want here. But we have the restrictions, but they would love to come here still. So we have seen the growth. I was on the multiple communities of the Morrisville town. Last 10 years, we have gone from 20 million to 60 million, 2025 years of budget, huge increase. You know what? We are doing national conventions at HSNC now. We had two already conventions where five to 600 North American, Canadian people came down because of the beautiful facility. This weekend, we have a pyramid meditation camp. 700 people throughout India, North America, Canada coming here. They want to occupy the hotels. We'll have, end of September, temple executive for North India, for North America and Canada, 400 executives. Where are they going to stay? They're going to occupy the hotels, beautiful hotels we have in the Morrisville town. That's going to bring a lot of resume. It has been bringing it already. It's going to bring more and more with this national convention. This is putting Morrisville on the nation's chart. So that's what we want to do it. You have all, everyone should know it. It's our commitment that traffic management is the most important aspect to us, and we will obey by that, and we will further improve. Thank you.
So thank you. If you could also provide your name and address?
This is Manoj Pandya. I'm the president of HSNC 309 Aviation Parkway, Morrisville.
And your residential address, sir?
My residential address is 101 Keytop Road, Cary.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Drishti Mittal. I'm, I live in 108 Carney Court, Cary, but I'm representing Morrisville. So first, I want to thank Morrisville Town Council for giving us youth an opportunity to speak, and then HSNC. So my story is that I immigrated here in Morrisville at 2011, and I've seen this place grow. So I've seen downtown Cary Parkway newly established, and then I saw Benton and Park West Village. So I was wondering, where is the representation for Indians? Because we have doubled in size when I used to, like, when I immigrated here. So HSNC showcases all this deep culture of India by showing, by having multiple priests from all over the places. And whenever I need help, I can't really know what to read. So I need a library for reading the spiritual books, which is why we need a library to be installed for books about self-help and spiritual books, and not only to focus on one religion, but for all, which comes to my second point, a place for interfaith meetings. My friend, who is Jewish, needs to learn all the religions. And I was wondering if HSNC can have this place, but we can't because we don't have that much space for interfaith meetings. So having large classroom sizes will help me benefit for interfaith meetings. Lastly, I want to emphasize that this land will not only benefit HSNC, but to everyone. At HSNC, we help provide food, as Melissa stated. And also, we also help benefit like other organizations, like Kieran Organizations, which helps with women's safety in North Carolina. Speaking of safety, HSNC will enhance more security measures. So enhanced HSNC will provide everyone with a good, with a good place. So thank you.
Good evening. I'm Pratik Nekkandi, and I live in 3095 Valley Side Court, Cary. So I'm here as representative of HSNC. We have a subdivision called Trail Blazers, and I'm the head of fundraising in that subdivision. So as my friend Drishti has stated before, there's a couple of things that we thought would be nice in the new expansion, and that's why we believe that, you know, to get the expansion. So one thing, as Uncle said, we want to make it like a YMCA of sorts, but an Indian sort, and in the one. So I believe that to do that, we need a gym facility. And it's also convenient for families that go to the temple to have a gym facility there. Because with the new expansion, we'll have a lot of walking paths. And I'd give an example, my grandma, she likes to go on walks a lot. So we usually take her to the park, but she'd definitely be happy to go to the temple and walk instead. And my dad, he works out. So it's really convenient when there is a gym at the temple with the expansion. But a more important thing that I'd like to address is a lack of space for our cultural shows. So I believe that an amphitheater for, would be due. And the reason is, some of our cultural, cultural shows, like Karasam, they're combat arts. So you'd need a large area to perform and to view from a safe distance. So an amphitheater would solve that. And it could also double as a place for events such as marriages, birthdays, and also a dance studio, where anyone interested can attend and learn India's cultural dances. Lastly, I believe that if we can turn some of the landscape area into serendip spots for spiritual activities such as yoga and meditation, it greatly benefits the community since in the current HSNC temple, we don't have space for that. And since it'd be surrounded by vegetation, it allows people to better connect with nature and make it a true meditation spot, in my opinion. Lastly, I'd like to end this by saying that all these additions wouldn't benefit just the community, but the community overall as a whole, because as Ms. Melissa has stated, the temple is open to people from all faiths and all walks of life. So I believe that it would be great to expand the temple. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, good evening. My name is Om and Om Tukwar, and my address is 5716 Harke Court, Cary. Good evening. So as my peers had talked about, some ideas to, and proposed few ideas to the expansion of HSNC temple, I want to propose, I want to add on to them. A few of my ideas have been already discussed about the parking lot status and the traffic with the entries and exits from HSNC's main campus. I want to add on, for example, RDU Airport, the main parking building, they have a centralized system where they track parking spots with sensors. And I believe that if we add that to our campus, it would be really helpful to save people's time because people can see how many spots are available in that specific lane, and it would help the public time and cause less traffic. I also wanted to talk about another idea is adding a cafe for youth, and not just for youth, but everyone else. It's a great place for everyone to connect and socialize. But adding a cafe, as a teenager, I know that, like, I like to connect with my friends, study sessions, and go out with them. And having a cafe where it's next to a temple with the spiritual vibes and the positive energy, it's a great place for us to study and focus and be productive. I feel like the adding of cafe would be great because when people are at like festivals and occasions that HSNC hosts, people want food on the spots, right? They don't want to go out five to 10 minutes and get food and come back. This will cause more traffic. Instead, I feel like if we have a cafe and that can host, like, right now we have 3,000 members, if we can host a lot of people, it would be great, and it would cause less traffic. And yeah, thank you for your time.
My name is Ramesh Thora, 117 Field Brook Court, Cary, North Carolina. Good evening. It's a perfect day to speak about seniors and senior activities on a day where we do the proclamation for seniors. So thank you, council, for doing that. As a senior club member, our mission has been very simple, how to enrich the life of seniors. And we have been doing various activities for the last 15 years in a small space we have. We have roughly 400 square feet of area, which is where we try to do all the activities today possible. And I really am looking forward to building a new community center, which is part of a senior, which will be including senior center also for all the activities we can do there. You know, over the years, we have done several events here. One of the key events I would like to point out is the service to the community. We talk about cultural events all the time, but service to the community. During COVID time, we had an assembly line of house to house to build masks. We will go one person, one thing, second thing, and we were distributing those masks to senior centers, hospitals, and many seniors. We have done pillow sevas, where we build pillows and give it to the hospital for pediatric patients. All of these activities right now happening. Okay, can you hear me all right? Okay. So I'll hold it in my hand. So that's a kind of an activities we can do. And imagine what we can do more when we have a beautiful campus like that, where we can attract more people. So I am really looking forward to that. One of the key challenges for seniors is loneliness. And building a community center, which we give the seniors reason to get out of the home and come there and congregate, meet their fellow seniors in a culturally sensitive manner, that will be a great asset, I believe, which will be the part of the community center. We also work with youth. We work with docency kids. They come and teach us cyber, we call it cyber senior classes, where they come and teach us technology. They come and teach us chess, how to play chess. And we are building that bridge between the youngsters, young kids, and us, just like we saw some of the activity we talked about earlier. My previous speaker talked about new cafeteria. That will be a great blessing for seniors. If you can have a cafeteria where we can eat healthy food, we don't have to cook at home, and that will be a great relief to many of us. So such a community center will go a long ways. In Hindu religion, traditional cultural and religious activities.
So Mr. Thora, if you could just finish that last thought and email the rest.
Very quick. Hindu religion, the amalgamation of the cultural and religious activities work very well together. And a campus like this will take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kavita Katti, and my address is 204 Lake Tillery Drive in Cary. I am the current senior club chair, and I have to tell you, we have a membership list, a huge membership list, and we have a mailing list that goes, our newsletters go out to more than 500 people who are seniors. And we have monthly meetings, and our attendance numbers have been increasing. Every month we meet. We meet on the second Tuesday of the month. And we have a social hour where people get to talk with each other. We have presentations, which are educational or entertainment, and then, of course, there's food. So it's a great way to get seniors together. We also, the senior club also has lots of different interest groups that meet. And currently, we are meeting in this one, one room in the learning center. But I can just envision us having a yoga, yoga studio, a place where karaoke music can stay within the room with soundproof rooms, where people can meet for board games and play table tennis. So these are, these are some of the activities seniors are currently doing right in this one tiny room. So we, the community center proposal will give seniors the freedom to meet longer times and not just one hour or shorter time period. There are also plenty of other senior groups that meet outside of HSNC because they need to meet on weekends, and on weekends, we don't get time at our current location. So they are meeting elsewhere. So that they would also be able to now come to this camp, to this campus and enjoy all the benefits here. One new activity that the senior club is doing this year, we are having a senior resource exposition, and that's going to benefit all the people, all the seniors who will attend, and it's not just for people who belong to the temple. It is an open event. We are inviting all the businesses that are local, that provide resources for seniors, so assisted living homes, people from there, people who provide senior care, daycare, towns, senior centers, they will all be attending. And I'm hoping that this will be an annual event that benefits the society. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening, town council members, HSNC trustees, HSNC board members, and all the other organizations and others that are present here. My name is Neela Acharya. I'm the president of TGA, stands for Triangle Gujarati Association. We have been created and founded in 1988, and serving right now 1,500-plus members. We also have youth group and the learning center, and all these kids are actually going to HSNC Learning Center. Now, TGA has a lot of other activities, like we do seven or eight events throughout the year, mostly like Holi, Navratri, we do kite festival with the Morris, town of Morrisville. We also have Diwali parties, and we bring like comedy shows, plays, and everything. This is only possible because of HSNC campus. Since it has been founded, we have done all of our events pretty much at HSNC campus. So the expansion is very, very important because it brings an excellent source of, this is an excellent source of spiritual, cultural, educational, and social activities up there. Not only that, but it is, we are in a community where it's growing constantly. And in order to accommodate all these diversified community, HSNC campus expansion is a must. That's what I would say. Also, doing this expansion is going to bring in a lot more visitors up here. That's going to help in also our local businesses, and it's going to bring in revenue for the town of Morrisville. Last but not least, it is a very safe environment, not only for our parents, but the grandparents, the children. They feel safe to have any events there, even if they have to stay until late because there's a spiritual connection with HSNC campus. So please, it's my humble request to really approve this HSNC expansion for the campus thing. Thank you.
Good evening. Hello. Good evening. Name is Rajiv Thala, 302 Coal Canyon Court, Cary. First of all, thank you, Morrisville Town Council, for this opportunity, HSNC for this opportunity. I'm, most of them have said the different reasons why this campus expansion is happening, but I just want to add something new. You know, the HSNC campus has been a nerve center and will be a nerve center going forward for many generations. And people have had religious, social activities. But two years ago, we started when we thought of something new. We thought of conducting CPR classes for the public, and automatically HSNC's name came up because that is the center of this, the whole Indian. And I would not say Indian, but the whole community as a large, you know, Cary, Morrisville, Apex, sort of this forms the nerve center. So we've started this program for two years now, and we work closely with the town. So the Morrisville Fire Department and Wake EMS are our training partners. And we've done about close to 50 sessions over two years, and about close to 1,500 people have availed this training free of cost. So with this new campus expansion, we have more plans to expand training. We want to do more certified classes for people, do summer programs for middle and high schoolers, which is a constraint now. So with this new thing coming on board, I think most of these things will be a reality. So I just wanted to add this new, what I say, aspect to the whole. So I just wanted to add this new, uh, what I say, aspect to the whole the reason why we need this new campus to be approved.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council, council members. My name is VP Tiwari, 112 Beaverton Court. A few disclosure, I do have got a property on Fairview Avenue also and I'm a proud member of HSNC for the last 28 years. Today I'm here to represent HVM, Hindi Vikas Pandal. Um, and that board I've been serving from last 25 plus years and I'm one of the trustees. What we do here and why I'm here, um, talking about HSNC and why we need HSNC expansion is we do almost all of our activities where HSNC is directly or indirectly involved. Uh, we are serving a lot of, uh, um, Indian cultural programs like, um, every year we do 15th August, that is basically scheduled on 17th of this month. As well as Ramlela, um, many Hindi classes where almost 250 plus families, they basically enrolled their kids who are part of HVM and also throughout the Morrisville Cary Raleigh area. Now, um, learning center that we have currently, we have been using that from last 10 year plus since our last expansion. And, um, to enroll more kids, definitely we are looking forward from this program where HSNC expands and we are able to offer more linguistic options. And one of them, we are kind of tying up with Morris, city of Morrisville also and city of Morrisville is assisting us. So, so to go to the next level, um, these schools and programs that are promoting cultural values, uh, languages from India, especially Hindi, uh, those needs better facilities, better expansions where we can move and have better classes. So for that, as we have already seen in the past, at least my 25 plus years, whenever HSNC grew, uh, city of Morrisville actually grew in terms of, um, demographics, um, quality of people, um, more doctors, more engineers. Um, and, and some of these kids who are born here in America, they, they want to get in touch with Indian culture. And HSNC has provided that umbrella from last several years. And, uh, their expansion is going to assist in those, um, to get more and more out of that. Uh, with that, um, I'll definitely request and support council's approval on what proposal and resoning efforts that HSNC is requesting. Thank you so much.
Hello. Good afternoon, council members and good afternoon, the board and designated executives out here. My name is, my name is Amar Solasa. I have been a long time resident of Morrisville, but I now live in Cary. My address is 512 Warly Green Lane, Cary. I represent here, uh, an organization called Silicon Andhra Manapadi, a language teaching school with a little over 400 kids studying the language called Telugu. And, uh, it's the 15th most spoken language in the world. And it's an approved language within the Wake County as well. And we're fortunate to have the, uh, you know, HSNC as a place for our kids to uh, participate in various events as well as utilize the learning center opportunities for, for us to teach the language to the next generation. We've been using it for last 10 years or so. Uh, one of the big event that Manoj was mentioning, uh, we recently had a congregation of 400 plus teachers across 23 different states come into this place. And, uh, we have had a three day training session for the teachers and these are all nonprofit, uh, um, I mean, org-centric initiative and we, all, all of us are volunteers. And, uh, you know, we work hard to, to preserve the culture and, uh, and educate the kids, the, the mother tongue of them. So my, my request to, to you is like, there are certain things that, you know, can be explained in a, in a, you know, with a vision. And there are some things, there are tangible benefits that we get. Uh, by teaching the language is one thing, but having a facility to teach the language uh, that, uh, you know, allows us to, to really conduct our classes and make them successful uh, is a, is a good thing. And, uh, having the expansion for, for the HSNC, uh, definitely helps all of us. And, uh, not only the, the teacher conference that we have conducted here, I'm seeing lot more events coming out here. I myself have talked to the nearby hotels to house all these 400 people coming from 23 different states. And imagine the amount of transportation or the other activities that we bring in by having them here for three days. Help us. And, uh, I'd like you to request this consideration. And, uh, I do want to add one thing that I have been an attendee requesting the Morrisville Cricket Ground with my kids being the small kids. And now you see how this has become the big, uh, the cricket capital of USA, we proudly call it as. And with this expansion, I'm envisioning that it could be a spiritual capital of USA for, for all the things that we do and, uh, practice as well as, you know, share and care the community across. So I'd like to thank you for giving the opportunity.
Hello. Hello. I don't want to speak right now. Um, I want to reserve that. I just want to ask a point of information. How does that, um, you're only allowed to speak once on the subject? I, I would like better clarity of that as a homeowner that's directly, directly related to this project, only being allowed to speak once.
It's a rule that you only get to speak once during a public hearing and sometimes public hearings are carried forward to the following meeting. This may or may not be carried forward. So if you have your points to make, I suggest you do that tonight in case we don't have a public hearing going forward. It might get closed tonight depending on the will of the council.
Okay.
At any time, you can always send an email with your points.
Okay.
Hearing it from a person in person is helpful to me. So.
Okay.
I would leave that to your judgment.
I would have felt more comfortable putting all my thoughts together for the next time around. That's why I wanted to not speak tonight.
You can put those into an email.
But if you're saying that we're not going to have anything to talk about after tonight, then.
I honestly don't know if we'll have this public hearing open in two weeks or whether it'll be closed tonight.
Okay. All right. Well, my name is Andrea Bamy Hernandez. I'm at 108 Clements Drive. Um, so I am on that site plan right there. Um, if you look at the residential properties to the north, um, on the top of the page, um, my property is one, two, five in there. Um, so I am going to be directly impacted by the traffic flow and that is my primary concern. Um, it is a small residential road. It is going to get expanded at the cost of the, um, Indian, uh, community center because they're changing the designation and it'll require it to do so. Um, but right now it's a small residential road and those are all residential properties there. Uh, we already have significant traffic and problems with parking, noise problems and other issues. Um, but the traffic flow coming in and out of there is a major concern because aviation parkway is not expanded. So the only request that I can, you know, I would prefer to see them change where those, um, access points are and not utilize Clements as much. The concern is that Clements is not going to expand much and it's still dumping onto aviation. So you have the traffic coming out of the, um, property right onto aviation. Some are going to be automatic rights and some are going to be lefts. And then everybody coming out of Clements is going to be sitting there in my neighborhood trying to leave and get out. And they're not going to be able to because everyone's already entering or exiting onto aviation and filling up the road. Um, seven, 800 cars is a lot and we already have a problem at 350. The one request that I would make is that, um, you all would just consider um, not just expanding the parking, parking capacity on, based on how quickly buildings are built, but, um, limit parking, parking capacity to, um, when the aviation parkway is expanded. It's at 350 right now and aviation parkway can't handle it. So if you allow it to go to 400 or 500 parking spaces and cap it off there at least until the DOT and the, the state have expanded aviation parkway, which is on the plans, but until that is done, we simply cannot handle the traffic flow. And you have to understand there's more going on in aviation parkway than just this development. Final point, 100, um, 100 feet is 10 stories. The tallest temple in Cary is only 87 feet. Um, 10 stories is huge. There is no building in Cary or Raleigh to my knowledge that's that high. I mean Cary or Morrisville. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Hernandez. I live on 108 Clements Drive. Like my wife was saying, I don't think, uh, Morrisville Parkway will, Aviation Parkway will handle all that traffic. It's not handling right now. I mean, traffic backups all the way to almost Crabtree Lake. Let's see how bad it is because it's only one lane. You gotta realize that Morrisville is a small town and it's trapped, okay? From people going to Cary to Apex to West Cary. The only roads that you have is 54 and, uh, Davis Drive, right? The Davis Drive is the best one, but 54 shows back up all the way to 540 because everybody wants to go to Cary. Same for aviation. Uh, everybody goes to Cary past 55. I take that road every day, every morning to go back. It gets so bad that even if you live here, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock and you try to take the, the left from Town Hall to Carpenter Morrisville, you just can't. Because let's see how bad it is. A lot of people I see, they make a right, they make a U-turn and try to go straight. We just can't handle that traffic. Morrisville is just not be able to handle that side. You also have the new development that is on McCraman and Aviation. Oh. They already have a big, huge deck parking. That means that you're going to add another 1000 cars there going in and out. A lot of people are taking McCraman to all the way to go to Cary to 55. Um, there's another thing you guys don't know, but when you leave Clements to Aviation on winter time, you can't see anything because the winter sun is just blind you. So I wonder what's going to happen if you got an accident there. Now we, one of Clements is blocked. Nobody can get out. Nobody can go in. Uh, there is things like I see kids waiting on the corner for a school bus. You're not adding sidewalk, you're just adding six more feet. Uh, so the kids are going to be walking on the grass, waiting. So an accident happens, somebody, it's going to be a bad accident. I see more and more people walking for the, the new apartments to the temple. You don't even have sidewalks to make these people safe to go to those temples. I see it all the time, 7 o'clock at night, 8 o'clock, we driving, oh my God, what is that? Oh, so, oh my God, somebody walking on the, on the road. You just don't have. And, and traffic control and police department is not going to be able to handle that. I got a video right here, March 30.
You can finish that last thought and then send the rest via email. That'd be fine.
I got a video right here, how it gets crowded and the police department won't be able, it's not able to handle because it's just too many people.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is Mahi Biradi. I live on 1021 Bender Ridge Drive, Morrisville, North Carolina. So I am the current president of Triangle Telangana Association. Um, currently we have around 400 plus family, uh, who are the members of our community. Um, I've been living in Morrisville from almost like 15 years now. Um, one of the biggest challenge, um, that we have today, I think everyone knows and they are talking about the same. We cannot, um, do learning programs or, uh, you know, promote a culture or relational activities. And I think last week or two weeks back, we were doing health fair. I think, uh, Morrisville mayor and the council members were there to, we don't have enough, um, facility, you know, we were standing outside in the hot weather to conduct the blood drive. So, um, always whenever we want to do an event, um, the basic issue that we have is, you know, uh, we don't have enough space. Um, so we, like, you know, as a president, I was looking for what is the alternate space? Should we go to Raleigh? But Morrisville is the center of everything. Like there's so many families who live here and we want to do all this within the, within the town. So what I would, uh, request the town council, uh, members is to, uh, you know, approve this plan so that all the kids, I mean, even my kids, they grow up here. Right now there's no space, uh, the expansion that we have today. So, um, please consider, and I think this is a very useful project for the community. Um, especially, especially for learning, you know, there's no space. We want to learn stuff or, you know, do drives, anything. So thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, my name is Anand Shah. Um, I live at 409 Page 3 Point Court in Cary. Um, I'm here to speak on behalf of the, the Jan group as we call it. We are a subset, just like the previous gentleman mentioned. Um, we've been part of HSNC since 1978, right? So you all saw the timeline in history. They were incorporated in 1976. We were incorporated in 1978. Some of our founding members were also part of the same group that helped establish the original center. Um, and, and like the councilwoman mentioned earlier in her remarks, um, I like to think about history too. I was here, uh, in, uh, 1994 and then in 1999, when the new learning center got built. I'm like, boy, you know, we're done. Like I think we're all set for decades and then here we are, right? So I am here primarily to just appeal to you, not for me or for my family, although part of me wants to do that, but really for the next generation, right? My children and, um, you know, for maybe they're my grandchildren someday. Um, they look to this place as, as their home, right? They are going to grow here. They went to school here. They have a lot of strong ties. They went to colleges here. Um, and so they really kind of see HSNC as that anchor place that they have so many memories attached. Um, one of our biggest challenges right now, and you know, Manoj knows this because I hound him all the time, is I can't hold Sunday school, uh, even in the existing facility for roughly about 100 children that we have, primarily because there are so many groups that also have the same idea and we just don't have enough space, right? So, um, one of my goals is to, um, you know, work within the confines of this plan, which is a fantastic plan, by the way, and I obviously don't want to, you know, speak to his qualities because we've been at this thing for almost two hours. But I think primarily what they're trying to address is create a safe and learning environment, um, regardless of the faith, regardless of the cultural practice, for everybody to come together and, um, you know, be in a safe environment, um, for years and years to practice, right? So, um, that's just really, you know, my appeal is, um, this, this growth and this expansion is primarily benefiting, benefiting the next generation to, uh, participate in cultural activities uh, and then expand, you know, their knowledge while also giving back to the community, right? We as a group, uh, the JSCNC, we're a nonprofit, by the way, you know, been around since 1978. We've given back to community. We also, um, uh, have, um, adopted one of the highways. Like you all probably drive on that stretch of 54. That's, uh, my youth group, uh, cleaning it twice a year, uh, spring and fall, like clockwork. We've been doing that for 19 years. Uh, so anyhow, that's just, uh, my thought and, uh, with that I'll conclude. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Yogi Patel and I live on 110 Clements Drive, Morrisville. Which is directly adjacent to the HSNC temple. And, uh, thank you everyone for the opportunity for letting me share my thoughts. And thank you, everyone, for the opportunity, for letting me share my thoughts today. I want to begin by expressing my respect and support for the HSNC temple. As a fellow Hindu, I also understand the significance of this expansion and the positive impact it can have on our community. However, I also feel it's important to discuss the concerns directly affect, that directly affect those of us who live in the immediate vicinity. My primary concern revolves around the placement of the driveway entrance, which is directly in front of my own driveway. And during the events, the increase in traffic is substantial and it often leads to congestion on the road. And it also makes it difficult for my family to enter and exit our own driveway. I have noticed that especially when the large crowds arrive, it can become challenging to manage the flow of the traffic and the vehicles, which do sometimes result in blocked driveways and a disruption in our own neighborhood. I've literally seen people drive directly in front of my driveway and I was not being able to do anything about it, even though there were cop cars on the front of the road. While I understand the importance of these gatherings, it's also crucial that the neighborhood's residential nature is respected as well. I'm concerned about the potential removal of the trees that are already matured and the installation of potentially many light poles that would increase the light pollution in the area. And the trees around my home contribute to not only the peaceful environment, but also a lot of natural value, right? It basically increased lighting could also lead to light pollution, which would affect the natural ambiance in our neighborhood. I respectfully request that the temple and the city planners consider relocating the driveway entrance to a location that does not directly affect any of our residents in that area. And this adjustment would greatly alleviate the traffic and the safety concerns. Additionally, I urge the planners to explore ways to manage crowds more effectively during the events and to consider preserving the existing trees and minimizing any potential light pollution. My goal is not to oppose the temple's growth or the expansion. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dylan Jones. Live at 114 Clements Drive. So again, directly affected by this. If we look at this map, only one street is being negatively affected significantly, and that's Clements. So I ask y'all to please rethink this to not negatively affect one neighborhood because that's exactly what this is doing. I bought my house in 2019 for a quiet area for my children to play. That is going to ruin this. Already on Saturday, Sunday mornings, whenever there's any type of event, I wake up to music and loud drums inside my house. Not outside, not on my lawn, inside my house. This is only going to create a further problem. I am totally cool with the temple's expansion. Absolutely, y'all deserve it. Keep it up. Do not like the driveway. That is going to be an issue and I will complain about it every opportunity that I get. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Town Council. Good to be back. We were here in December when some of the town council were taking oath. I am a president of Krishnada B Y O Shinadji Haveli that is happening in Chatham County. I am in this area since 1990 and foremost, I've been with HSNC since then. I was HSNC president 19, 2021 and have worked with some of you guys. And I have been in cultural chair and cultural committee for last 25 years at HSNC. And I have seen HSNC growing. Foremost, I, my kids were born here. My kids are in college. To me, HSNC is a platform where we create our young generation how to live life, how to make our community better. That's what HSNC is for. And I have seen so many Indian kids graduating, going out of HSNC and becoming good adults. By saying that, when we have a cultural event, we have three major university in this area, UNC, Chapel Hill, Duke and NC State. So whenever we have a holy event, whenever we have a Navaratri event, these kids, they would like to come and be part of with their friends, have fun, learn the culture. But sometimes we have to tell them no because of the situation. And I understand all this residence, there is a legit complaint. But we have to grow and we have to make it better so it will be safe and fun for everybody. And these kids, this time in holy, we had to go to Durham Library. We had to go to Chapel Hill. We had to go to Cary to show them because we did not wanted those kids to come in and play holy at HSNC because the crowd gets more. So we went there, we showed them how to play, how we do holy, how, how we play holy and how our culture does different things. So by saying this, HSNC needs to grow and this is an excellent project and it will be better for everyone, for safe and for fun. Thank you. And my name is Manisha Patel and I live in 1050 Kenny Court, Cary, Western Parkway. That's where I live, nearby temple. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Moss. I'm a resident at 112 Clements Drive. Many of you have mentioned the concerns of the negative impact on the quality of life of those residents on Fairview Drive, but no one has thought to mention the residents on Clements Drive. And yet, we are the ones who will be most impacted by the proposed plans and traffic changes. I'm not opposed to all aspects of the applicant's expansion plans. I come to you in opposition to a portion of these plans, specifically the rezoning of the land parcels identified on Clements Drive. We would like to keep it in the residential neighborhood preservation that it is to, an effort to keep it the small neighborhood that we have. Should the rezoning plans continue as approved, regardless of my efforts, I also want to share my opposition to the proposed plans to construct multiple entrances and exits on Clements Drive to access the proposed future project. Clements Drive has been a residential street for many decades and needs to remain protected as such. It is where we walk for exercise. It's where we walk our dogs. It's where our kids walk to catch a school bus. It's where kids and grandkids learn to ride bikes. And these things happen on our residential street because it is our only safe option. We don't have access to nearby sidewalks as the state nor city have thought it important enough to extend existing and newly constructed sidewalks to us. You'll see when you drive along Aviation, there are patches of the road where there are sidewalks and there are other patches that are not. So we have no safe access to greenways. Allowing the rezoning and the construction of entrances and egress driveways to the temple expansion project on Clements Drive will create a high-volume traffic to occur at all times of the day and night, making it an unsafe environment for the health and well-being of our families, prohibiting the use of our own street for recreation and physical fitness and enjoyment. Thank you for your consideration.
Was there anyone else signed up as far as you can tell?
No, sir.
Did anyone sign up and didn't get a chance to speak? It is our practice that we offer the opportunity. If you didn't sign up and you still want to speak for up to three minutes, is there anyone who would like to avail themselves of that opportunity? We'll just ask you to write down your name and your address. And right after the public hearing, before we do anything else, I think we're gonna be taking a break, so everyone's aware of that.
I'm Himanshu Desai. I'm a proud homeowner of the Morrisville Township and also a committee member on PSA of the township. As a township proud resident and a member of Township Public Safety Advisory Committee, it gives me immense pleasure and happiness to learn that the planning board is considering the Hindu Society of North Carolinas joining application today. Asian Indian community is thriving in this area and all ethnicities have settled in this area and most of the Hindu owners, homeowners are in Morrisville Township. So all our families depend on, on Hindu HSNC for our social, cultural and and religious deeds. We gather under this umbrella regularly and place is not just a religious place, but all our age group, Bengals and tribes here. So by having this campus developed, it will give a very sustainable, environment safe and very growing structure for the, our younger generation. So I sincerely propose the committee to approve this expansion. Thank you very much.
And sir, you said you're a Morrisville resident. Can you give us your residential address, please? We asked that you say it for the record.
Himanshu Desai, I live on 1000 Topland Port, Morrisville.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Okay. Thank you very much. I think we're gonna take a 15-minute break and then we'll come back and have some discussions. Please reconvene at 8:45.
Hey, everybody. Thank you very much. I think we maybe needed that extra little five minutes to come back in. And our energy is recharged. And now, at this time, I'd like to recognize Town Clerk Spillane, who's going to acknowledge some of the emails that we received on this subject as part of the public hearing. Ms. Spillane?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. We have had some responses in regards to this HSNC public hearing. And I will provide you with the names of the organizations and share that, overall, they are in support of the HSNC expansion. So we received an email from the HSNC president. And please, please forgive me. I beg your forgiveness if I have the name pronounced incorrectly. Menaj Pandey. And he submitted with that several, four letters in support. The first company is Hindi Vikas Mandal. And that was signed by Sushma Maheshri. The next was a letter from Raleigh SAI Center, signed by Sethil Kumar. We have a letter from Sanskar Academy, signed by Shirish Amin. And a letter from Triangle Garty Association of North Carolina. And that was signed by Neela Archai. We then have a, please excuse me. We then have a letter received in support from the president of the RTPMM organization. And the president is Suvarna Gassisas. And then the final email received was from the Triangle Area Teluge Association of NC, signed by Harish Kenengati. I have provided copies of these for counsel. And wait, bear with me. I think I almost. We did receive, at the last moment as well, a letter in support from Himashu Desai of Ger- Ger- Excuse me, please. Geradi Samaj of North Carolina. And again, I'd like to indicate that these organizations were represented support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the input that we've gotten on this subject. At this time, I'd like to open the discussion amongst us. And then, towards the end of our discussion, we'll decide whether or not we're going to leave the public hearing open for another two weeks or to close it. Does anyone have any further thoughts or questions for staff? Or anything that they want to react to from what they heard? I personally really appreciate that Clemens, people from Clemens, because we had gotten some emails from Fairview and heard about Fairview. But hearing from Clemens and their concerns, I think is important for everyone to hear, including the applicant, to see if they can bring back anything that might allay some of those concerns. So I'd like to start with Councilmember Johnson, followed by Councilmember Strongen Johnson, please.
So I also want to go and apologize to the residents on Clemens for not addressing their concerns earlier tonight. If you're not aware of the concerns. So I appreciate you coming forward. It's not too late for you to express your concerns and issues with what is happening today on Clemens and, of course, what potentially could happen in the future. So I appreciate that. So to that end, when I look at the properties on Clemens, it looks like the Hindu Society of North Carolina already owns some properties further down on Clemens. So my question is, has there been a broad thinking to potentially swapping and moving the entrance further down on Clemens? That's number one. Were there other options considered about eliminating that entrance altogether on Clemens? And can we further take, go back and take a look at that and make sure we've done our due diligence and that we are trying to limit any kind of negative impact to the residents on Clemens?
Yeah, so I think that one of the issues is because there's two potential areas. And I would love to also hear from the applicant team on this. But from staff perspective, we have the Fairview entrance, which, as was pointed out, HSNC does not own any of the parcels associated on Fairview, except for the ones that are directly adjacent to where that cul-de-sac is. Clemens, they do own all those parcels and are able to make those improvements on the road to get to the EDCM specs of 26 feet. There is certainly stacking issues to consider with eliminating an entrance. But again, I think that the applicant team could certainly address this more thoughtfully than I could.
Let me clear when I say HSNC owns some properties on Clemens. I'm talking about across the street. The residents, as hoped tonight, own the properties across the street on Clemens, further, closest to Aviation. I'm talking about the properties further down on Clemens, across the street.
Good evening. Kevin Dean with Kilmeade Horn 300 Main Street in Holly Springs. So part of that question is, when we're looking at spacing for driveways on Clemens, one of the benefits to having it more centrally located is that all the exiting traffic wouldn't have to travel the span of Clemens Drive. The further you push a sole access point on Clemens Drive, then they're passing every residence on that side of the street, as opposed to already being halfway down Clemens Drive. So that's one of the options. Another thing that hasn't been talked about explicitly, but we did want to address, you know, long-term NCDOT has plans to widen Aviation Parkway as part of STIP Project U 5811. That project's proposed to go to right-of-way acquisition in 2026 and construction in 2028. And as part of that project, Aviation Parkway gets widened to a four-lane divided roadway, which will provide sidewalks all along Aviation Parkway from 54 up to 40, basically. What it will also do is it will restrict the Clemens Drive access to right-in, right-out. So that will no longer be a full-movement driveway once the Aviation Parkway widening is in place. So one of the benefits of having an access point between Hindu Society and Clemens Drive is that traffic that's currently on Clemens Drive that likes to turn left in or left out of Clemens can travel through the Hindu Society site and turn left onto Aviation Parkway at the full-movement driveway that will remain once the NCDOT project is in place. So while we understand that there will be traffic impacts to Clemens with an access there, we still think that the primary access is going to be on Aviation Parkway. But that connectivity that's being provided as part of this project will also allow for an additional route for traffic on to and off of Clemens that will be eliminated once the DOT project is in place. So we haven't talked about that explicitly, but I think it's worthwhile, we're talking about impacts to Clemens, that I would mention that for consideration, so.
So addressed your concerns at this time enough?
Well, if you're going to reevaluate and come back to time, I might have additional questions. I think if the entrance stays on Clemens, I think the same concern that I had on Fairview is doubled on Clemens as far as making sure that there's there's some kind of plan in place for large events so that the traffic is handled appropriately.
And that's a great point. And one of the aspects of the traffic management plan is the designation for a police officer at the intersection of Aviation at Clemens. So that will be one of the aspects that's already addressed in the traffic management plan that I think will help accommodate that. And like has been mentioned, widening Clemens to 26 feet and providing sidewalks along there does replace, does add pedestrian accommodations that don't exist today for the residents all along Clemens, so.
Councilmember Strongen Johnson, please, followed by Councilmember Robati.
Can I just make one additional point that I wanted to mention? Also on Clemens Drive, something that, you know, there's a lot of information we have. We've given to you guys tonight. So one thing we didn't mention, on Clemens Drive, what we have proposed is putting signage along there on our side of the street for no parking as well, just to help with any sort of issues that might be happening today with parking. We are trying to get in front of that just to make sure that we're addressing that.
Councilmember Strongen Johnson, please.
My question is related to fire safety. And I know that we don't have our fire chief here, so this can wait until the next time we revisit this topic. With the temple being a proposed height of 100 feet, I would like to know and appreciate how our ladders are going to support an emergency event for a structure of that size? Or if there's complimentary equipment with carry and apex that could also support such a structure? It's, we don't have an example in town yet of something that high. And it could be a public safety need or a gap that's created through that taller building. Thank you.
Could you explain to me the nature of the building that would be 100 feet tall? I don't, there, I don't know exactly what that building is going to be. Are there going to be people in it? Is, can you just explain that to me, please?
I'm sure. And we do have Sinjeev, who's the architect on the project. He could probably provide some more context.
Sure.
But that is just related to the temple building. And I'll let him speak to that.
Great.
Good evening. Sinjeev Patel, Duda Paint Architects. The temple, while it's not completely designed yet, we're asking for 100 feet just to accommodate what's basically a steeple. So imagine a church with a steeple. The topmost point is not necessarily occupiable. So that's the same nature of what would be called the shikr of the temple itself.
So what would be the occupiable height of the, what would be the occupiable part of the building?
Right now, I think most traditional temples are about maybe two levels maximum. So maybe 40 feet would be the occupiable zone. And then there would be basically what's known as a shikr, like a steeple that would be a little bit taller.
Okay. Thank you.
Right now, we're approximating it to be around 80 feet maximum. But I think we're looking at just what that is right now in terms of proportions.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for not knowing that. And then the other question I had is the, I'm really concerned now that we've heard from the people on Clemens Drive because they said that they're having issues now. And it concerns me that we are, you know, there's going to be considerably more people there. And I do think that, you know, whether we explore some kind of like right-in, right-out situation on Clemens Drive or, you know, I don't, I'm looking at this and I'm not really sure what the other options would be. But I trust that you're going to come back with something great. Yeah, because I can definitely see their point and I'm very concerned about it.
Yeah, and as Kevin mentioned, the four large events, there is police presence that's located at Clemens and Aviation. So that is one factor that would alleviate some of those concerns. As far as the smaller events, there's, I mean, I totally sympathize with the residents there. That is something that has been overdue. And I would applaud HSNC for creating the existing traffic management plan that works to alleviate that. But we can certainly get more into details.
Yeah, actually, something that didn't occur to me until I started thinking about the traffic was that people come out of Clemens Drive. And then at the, if they, let's say they make a right onto Clemens Drive, are they then making a left to go somewhere else? Or are they trying to feed back out onto Aviation? Because I could see that being just a cluster. I don't know if I quite understand what you're saying. Can you? I'm saying that if people, if you make this a little bit smaller. So at the top, people come out onto Clemens and they make a right. Okay? And they go down to what I presume is a stop sign, right? So at that stop sign, are they making? I mean, you must have done some type of traffic management study at that, at that stop sign. Are they making a left to go somewhere else? Or are they making a right and trying to feed back onto Aviation Parkway? Like in a giant hellish circle?
Great question. So our traffic study assumed that everyone exiting from Clemens would be turning right because, long-term, the plan from NCDOT is the only option you will have is to turn right. So anyone turning left would have to go out the main access point onto Aviation. But you'd have a right-in, right-out driveway further south of the existing driveway on Aviation. So that'll help further separate traffic. And then the Clemens Drive access as well.
Okay, but that Aviation Parkway, the DOT project for the Aviation Parkway, that is not really even in the foreseeable cards. So I think we need to...
It goes right-of-way in 2026 and construction in 2028. And this is not a project that gets built and occupy in the next 12 months. This is a project that still has to go through great details of site design and fundraising to get to the point where we're actually adding any additional significant volume of traffic before NCDOT's project gets out here. It's a great question.
Okay. I, I think we should check that Aviation Parkway. I think we should check those dates.
I agree. I think it's 2030.
Yeah. I, the last thing, I mean, we just met with Campo the other day. Liz, TJ, you were there. Do you remember when they said the Aviation Parkway was in the cards?
I thought it was '28, done in '30, but I could be misremembering. And we have someone who's, was taking notes at that meeting very, very well, so.
Oh, there we go. Michelle knows.
Your name and your role for the record, please.
Michelle Stegall Planning Director. Yes, that's correct. Right-of-way in 2026, construction to start in 2028. But it's anticipated to take about two years to complete construction. So construction would be between 2028 and 2030.
Okay. I guess I'm just saying that I feel like we need to be keeping all the moving parts in mind because I, I mean, I don't see how we just, you know, start dumping more cars onto Clemens without some type of long-range plan. So looking forward to your thoughts at future meetings.
Mayor Potem Garamella, please.
First, I totally hear the issues that Clemens Drive is going to have, anticipating this is going to happen in the next 24 months, which I hardly doubt it. But my question is, can we restrict the access in and out through, like, you know, those gates? Where you're directing the flow of the people, like, you know, how it is in and out, like RBC? You know, you have the central lane going both directions based on the arrows that you do. So if the idea is to get into that temple, use one way in so that there's no back and forth? Or something like that, which will help in single-flow navigation instead of two, which will jam the whole area because a person is trying to do left? And there is, and you can put a no-left on right now because it's a full-moving intersection or something like that? Because the moment when both are coming and they're trying to do a left, he will never get a chance because the cars are coming right in like that. So it will cause more issues. So I'm just thinking of any creative ideas. But also keep in mind, like, you know, the amount of people who are growing in this community are, there's no count to it. You know, we are factoring people coming from Apex, Holly Springs, who go over in Raleigh area. So this is pretty much the epicenter that basically does it. And as I earlier said, the temple has no control on how many people come. And they're doing their best they can. Having, and I feel like an exit from Clemens is important from a fire safety point of view because right now HSNC has only one exit, in and out. If something happens to it, it's an issue. We don't have anything going out. And our UDO forces us, and Michelle, correct me, I'm right, you know, like, that we have to have an exit to the neighboring property, especially with such a big one. So it has to have more exits. But you guys can restrict it based on the event, what it is, if you want to do that path. But if this is not getting done, people still continue to block Clemens, no matter what. And that's why I was talking to John and others. They'll park at CDO and still walk. They don't care. They're getting a parking spot. And that gentleman who came and said they blocked their driveway. We have nonsensical drivers who will park and just for the sake of parking. And so it's only going to increase more. And I think by doing all these is only helping not only the neighbors, but the mainstream people on Aviation. Because the gentleman is 100% correct. Four o'clock, backed up all the way to Craftery. And that is happening no matter what. Four o'clock, there are no events at HSNC. They usually have evening events to start with. So that traffic is on saturation already. So I feel if you can navigate in and out kind of a thing and have a safe way for people to go, it could be a compromise, I feel. That's all.
So I'll share some thoughts, some of which comes from hearing my colleagues. I was thinking, if we're really trying to preserve quality of life along Clemens, a couple of things. Is it being considered that actually, like, kind of what you were saying, taking the next step, that the Clemens entrance is only open during these big events? So it's not something all the time? So they still have their regular residential streets, except when there's a big event? So that would be a thing.
There was some discussion at admin level. So there, I believe there were some suggestions at that level, yes.
Also, for the quality of life, I would say perhaps consider adding another police officer instead, in addition to down at Clemens and Aviation, but up at that entrance. To help people, make sure that they would be closer to the driveways of the residents so it could help them get out or something if they had a need.
Right.
But I think, that's the thing. During an event, you want to be able to leave so a police officer can help them do that.
Okay.
For example. Other thoughts were, are there sidewalks on Clemens through this improvement?
Currently, there will be with the improvements.
Okay, so I don't see that written, like...
Yeah, because they have to do the improvements.
I see the red, like, limits of proposed improvement. So I just want to make sure that there's going to be a new sidewalk on Clemens the whole distance, right?
Yeah, we'll follow the town's requirements for the street section, which includes a sidewalk.
Okay, so hopefully that helps a little bit, the fact that there aren't any sidewalks at all now. So at least they get down to Aviation. And the whole front on Aviation will have a sidewalk for at least the duration of that property. So there is more connectivity being added, although there are gaps. We have them all over town, so that's unfortunate. Other... Okay, that's all I can read of my handwriting right now. I'd like to, everyone's had a chance who wanted, so I'm going to circle back to Council, Mayor Potem Garamella.
My other issue is, you know, we keep on saying, as a factor of easiness, we'll have one more cop, you know, our police officer. These are all off-duty police officers. And it is very hard to get all these people lined up. You know, we had a lot of times. It is only as if you need it that people sign up for it. It is not that they're mandated to pick up their off-duty officer jobs. And we have to be pretty careful by not throwing that word easily, like, you know, A, to get off-duty officer. And B, any of the events? The off-duty officers are not cheap either. They come in a block of four. So you're pretty much having four or five officers here. It increases the whole thing. I'm not saying what is important, what is not. But it is critical to ensure that... what is important, what is not, but it is critical to ensure that we need the right amount. It's...police cannot basically manage everything all the time, you know. Yeah, they can only safely move the traffic where it's jam, it's a jam. I'm going to say, what I meant to say is, it is hard to get, and correct me, Brandon or, you know, Pete, our chief is here, that it's hard to get, you know, like, every time when we have these events, just will increase. So, the minimal self, you know, pad is the best way, I would feel, and we should consider that in that. And I don't know about, I didn't read the, your TMS, like, the transportation plan. How many officers does it call for?
Six for large events.
Six for large events. Okay.
So, we've recommended six, but the end decision for each event will be with town staff and the police department. They basically determine how many officers they believe that will need for that particular event.
Sorry, just to add another comment to that. So, definitely a fair point. It is an issue with the number of the special event permits that come through, working with police, the availability of officers. If you look at the traffic management plan, just did want to clarify that it is a mix of police officers and other traffic officers that would be hired by HSNC that would not be police.
Okay, so that makes it more clear. Outside on Aviation and Clements will be managed by our police and the internal circulation by HSNC. Okay, that's a fair point.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So, I have a question about trip generation. I don't, you didn't put any of that information in here. With all these new entrances, what, can you give us a chart? Usually, you have a chart. Did I miss it? Because I just flew through it again to make sure I didn't miss it, but...
No, ma'am, we did not have a trip generation table in there.
Okay. Could you share that with us too, please?
Yes, ma'am. So, the way, the, so, as y'all know, the Institute of Transportation Engineers provides the Trip Generation Manual, and that's typically the basis for trip generation. And when we have something like a community center, there's great data on the amount of traffic that a community center generates. Less data on civic and religious uses. So, what we did is we collected traffic counts on both a weekday and a Saturday at the one driveway there on Aviation Parkway and factored up those traffic counts based on the increase in size in the buildings. So, a 65-ish, 100-square-foot temple today, being expanded to 30,000 feet, was the reference point we used in our traffic study. So, we factored traffic four and a half times for that and then added that volume onto the network. So, that's how we went about it. So, what we'd say, similar to Melissa's point earlier about the amount of parking that will be needed is ultimately determined based on the sizes of the buildings that are proposed. We had to pick reference points for those, so we selected a 30,000-square-foot temple as a starting point and then factored the trip generation from the existing driveway, which obviously includes not only the temple, but the learning center, to get the amount of traffic that would be generated by the new site in addition to the community center traffic.
Okay.
So, if that makes it, that was the approach. Typically, we could say 100 single-family homes is 1,000 daily trips and 100 peak-hour trips. Typically, it's a little cleaner. The methodology for this one was based on discussions with staff at NC DOT, was a mix of data from the Trip Generation Manual and real data collected during typical weekday and a special event on a Saturday, and then factored based on the increased development we anticipate seeing on the site.
Okay.
So, that's how we went about that piece.
And that's fine. Thank you for that explanation. That's fine. I get it, by the way.
Yep, sure.
But that would, but you calculated then the trip generations in the future coming out of each one of these entrances, the right-in, right-out only, the main entrance on Aviation...
Yes, ma'am.
The entrance on Clements. I would, I think we need to see that. That would be helpful.
Okay. We can work on that. I don't have a clean way to get that to you right now. I can scramble for it. But what I will say about the Clements Drive, and to Councilmember Abadi's point earlier, that the idea that long-term, the Aviation at Clements driveway becomes a right-in, right-out driveway. You had a great point there with, that's basically sending traffic back down Aviation in front of the Hindu Society's main driveway. We think that the Clements Drive access will be the least-used access point of all of them. For most people who want to travel south or west on Aviation Parkway, depending on how we squint at the exhibit, either coming out the main driveway or the southern right-in, right-out that's being newly proposed on Aviation become much more attractive options because folks aren't doubling back through the site to get to Clements to come south. So, while we think it's a valuable resource, not only for our traffic, but to maintain the ability for residents on Clements to access their driveway without having to make, you know, go all across town to, when their driveway is restricted, we still think that the main traffic, the primary driveways for our site traffic will be the two on Aviation Parkway. So...
And then, thank you for that. Yeah, that would be helpful. But the other thing about seeing this future site overlaid on the current site would be really helpful, too. Because I think that entrance on Clements actually affects every resident that's on Clements. Wonderful.
Councilmember Al, please.
Yeah. I think my concern is just, you know, what compromise can we come up with to just ease the traffic? Because when it gets congested, like Mayor Potem was saying, traffic's going both ways. Have a hard time getting out. So, I don't know whether, you know, I like this idea of, to the extent we can put in more pedestrian infrastructure, like sidewalks, bike routes, things like that, that would help, you know, ease, give other people other ways of getting out. But when they want to get in the car, you know, I just don't know, you know, whether, this sounds like it's going to be a few years out until they raise the money and do all this stuff. Will the road, will that side of Aviation be wider in the next four to five years, or is it still going to be the same? What, I mean, is it going to, we said 2028, right, is when, so, and do we know when this is potentially going to be done, this expansion?
Million-dollar question.
Well...
So, the, this will be built out in phases as anticipated because it is such a large project, and it will take a lot of fundraising to get there. So, at this point, we don't have a end date in mind when this will be fully built out, but it certainly will not happen before 2028.
Because sometimes you can look at different, like, traffic lights and turn lanes and things like that, but that might not help in this situation because it's just a light here going on Avi- that way. So, I don't know. I'm not a traffic engineer. I just, you know, have concerns. You know, I just want us to make sure that we're doing what we can to address the residents of Clements, knowing that eventually it's going to get better with the wider roads and things like that. But I don't know. Maybe seeing the TIA data would help a little bit.
Okay, well, that's been a lot. I just want to, I wanted to remind myself that the reason we're even looking at Clements at all is because it's so problematic and challenging now on Aviation. So, that's safety issues, a lot of time, and that makes it hard for everyone in the whole area. So, I understand the want to not touch Clements at all, but I think it's probably a suitable and viable way to try to make the whole area work better over time. So, like was said, we're really glad to hear from Clements because we, I think, have been focusing on Fairview. So, now that Clements is more understood by all of us, we look forward to hearing the answers to all of that. So, at this point, unless someone has questions for Caleb Woodford, or the police chief, we need to decide as a group whether or not we're going to close this public hearing or keep it open for another two weeks. Does anyone have any thoughts or want to make a motion? I think we might have heard everything we're going to hear. That's just my initial thought, but I'd love to hear from my colleagues.
So, I'm okay with closing the public hearing. I think we have a lot of information to come back that we need to hear at the next meeting. But I would also tell the residents on Clements, the residents on Fairview, or the residents across the town of Morrisville, closing a public hearing does not mean you cannot still send in input to the town council. And I would encourage you, although you all did a fabulous job tonight when you spoke, if there's something else on your mind that you can put it in an email and send it to council, and we will read it and we will take it into consideration, even if the public hearing's closed.
So, to that end, just for process, would it be correct to do town council@morrisvillenc.gov or public hearings@morrisvillenc.gov? Looking at the town manager for that.
I can answer that for you, mayor.
Please.
It would be terrific if residents have any comments that they would like to share, if they could send them to Public Comments. We have that on the website.
Publiccomments@morrisvillenc.gov.
Correct.
Okay. And even if they spoke tonight, we'll receive those and hear them?
Yes, I will share them.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much for pointing that out, Councilmember Johnson. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to close a public hearing if that's the will of the council.
I put a motion to close a public hearing.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mayor Potem Garamella, a second from Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Any final questions for Mr. Michael or any staff? Okay. We'll hear from this again in two weeks. Thank you very much for everyone for being here and for all the input we received. Thank you. We're going to give the room a moment to clear because I think some people are leaving at this point. Excuse me, miss, we don't actually approach. You can ask the town clerk and pass it along, please. I'm sorry. Okay, so we're going to move on to the next item, please, at this time. The next public hearing is on the proposed major amendment to the Park West Village Mixed Use Plan Development District, Res. 22-0012. This public hearing remains open from the July 23rd meeting. At this time, we invite Brittany Johnson, Planning Manager, to the podium to provide any updates. And actually, I'm going to recognize Michelle Steagle at this time.
Thank you, mayor. Planning Manager Johnson is away at a training, so I'm going to be covering for her this evening. As you indicated, this is the Park West Plan Development major modification that was heard by town council two weeks ago. The applicant has requested that this public hearing be continued until, until your next meeting on August 27th. They are still in the process of taking in the feedback that they received at your last meeting and evaluating potential changes to the application. Tom Lowell is here this evening representing the applicant. If you do have any questions for him.
I do not see any questions, so I think we're fine to wait till the 27th. I'd like to recognize the town manager, Zudma, please.
I would just remind you, mayor, that you do have an open public hearing on this item that had been advertised prior to the request to pull the item. I would suggest you consider asking for anyone that might want to speak to that if they're here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And then, sorry, respectfully, consider whether you want to continue that to the 27th.
Okay, because that's, even though the applicant asked for that, doesn't mean that we necessarily have to accede to that request. Town Clerk Spillane, was there anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing item tonight?
Just a moment, please. So, for the Park West public hearing, we do have seven individuals that have signed up to speak.
Okay, we will entertain them. So, as before, you'll have three minutes at the microphone. Please start off with your name and your residential address, and we'd love to hear your thoughts. If you want to read out the first three, please?
We have Parig, Parig, Deesh. Kefta, Kathy. Himashu, Versai.
They might have done the wrong sheet.
He spoke at the earlier one.
I think that's probably the case, but let's go through the names and see if anyone...
Yeah, this is for Park West?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Charmil Patel.
Already spoke.
Jerise Patel and Dylan Jones.
Okay, so that might have been a misunderstanding. They might have thought that they were signing up for the other public hearing, which is fine. We've acknowledged them and tried to give them the chance to speak. And hopefully, they got a chance to speak even though they signed into the wrong one last time. So, I think we've heard from them.
Thank you. My apologies for not catching that.
No, it's all, it's all good. Was there any email public hearing input on this item?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Did anyone want to hear from the applicant on this subject at this time? Seeing none. Is it the will of the council to leave this open or to close it? I see head nods on leaving it open, so I believe that's going to be our choice. Do we have to take any action to leave it open or just?
Do that with the express condition that the public hearing remains open.
Do I vote on that, or do I just say this public hearing remains open?
I would vote on it, yes, sir.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to keep this public hearing open for another two weeks.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Abadi, a second from Mayor Potem Garamella to keep this public hearing open. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimously 7-0. I think we'll move on to the next item then. It's 9:33. The next public hearing is on the resolution approving the town center development agreement. The public hearing remains open from the July 23rd meeting. At this time, we invite town manager Brendan Zudma to the podium to provide any updates.
Evening, mayor, members of council. Thank you for your time tonight. We are returning to, you recall, at the July 23rd meeting, we had the first significant conversation about what alternates and value engineering might look like for this project. For the public, when this was first presented, it was presented as about a $19.4 million project. That included contingencies and escalation. That did not include the 4% fee, project management fee that we would pay to sing. With that 4% fee, it took it to approximately $20.2 million. Our discussion with you last time was to look at what some of the value engineering and alternates could be. You provided some feedback on those items, some of which was, we don't want to reduce or eliminate that. Others were, we were potentially willing to reduce that, and you had some questions about some specific items. So, Fred Bellin with Clearscapes is here tonight to walk through that with you. Todd Rankin was saying, well, I expect support that conversation to show you sort of a summary of what we heard that you were willing to consider taking out and what you did not want to take out. So, they'll talk you through that list and then show you a revised town cost, inclusive, again, of now a slightly reduced 4% fee based on the cost coming down. They'll also show you, we had a request to highlight what is, what is the actual just construction cost, and then what is the contingencies and escalation on top of that, just for transparency's sake. So, they'll be able to share that with you at the end of their presentation as well. Once they've completed that, the goal really is to ideally reach consensus around the items that would be pulled out of that project at this time, that would then not be included in the development agreement that we would potentially ask you to approve on August 27th, but also an understanding that those items could return to the project were one of several funding options to be realized later in the year. That would not be available at the time we asked you to approve it, but there are several items that we would have answers to, I would say, probably in most cases before the end of the calendar year, where most, if not all, of those items could be brought back to the project and funded, should you choose to do that, if those funds became available going forward. So, we'll seek your guidance around adoption, or really consensus around what those alternates would be and what that new proposed cost would be. And then, Jeannie will come up and give you some additional feedback. And then Jeannie will come up and give you some additional feedback around what the town funding model might look for this, both at $18 million and $19 million. We believe that there's a price in between there, that this project could potentially fall depending on your willingness to remove some items. And then also Ted Cole with Davenport Financial is with us to support Jeannie's conversation and to show you some of the models you've seen before and also show you the impact on our fiscal policies. You're used to seeing three or four of those charts, so those have been run with this project in mind and with the bond sale that would come up, that would sell the remainder of the bond money from the 2021 referendum. This sale would be approximately $20 million, just over $20 million. And again, that would provide approximately an additional $4 million in support to the town center project, roughly split between parks money and infrastructure money. And then the remainder and the difference there would be in some reserves. And so they will walk you through that and show you what that looks like. And then again, at the end of that, we would seek to see if there's consensus around a comfortability, excuse me, with what that cost might be compared to what you've demonstrated you're comfortable with removing from the project, at least at this time. So from there, then, what we would intend to do is come back to you on August 27 with the final development agreement that would include your modified cost estimate based on what you agreed to include or not include. Also would share that Lori Jones is working on just a couple of minor amendments to that development agreement that would better define what our interest would be. So we're having some conversation with Avi and his team around that. I don't think we have any hangups, but we just have a couple little things to discuss and work out, so we would bring those highlights back to you the 27th as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Fred and Todd to talk through the alternates. Mayor?
Does Councilmember Body have a question?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, at what point in the process do you think we would get a feel for what the ongoing operational costs of the project will be?
So Jeannie actually has the ability to share some of that with you tonight in terms of, you know, there's, there's some costs for us to participate in this and to run it. And again, these are going to be rough because we're a long way from that, but also comparing that to what the estimated revenue would be to show you that there is still an anticipated revenue, not a huge revenue, but that we would not be taking on, and we would not anticipate taking on additional costs once this opens and we're receiving the property tax associated with it.
Okay.
All right, and I'll come back to you at the end and we'll summarize and see where we're at.
And you don't have to give us your residential address, just your name and your role.
Good evening, my name is Fred Bellin with Clearscapes Architects. Pleasure to be here this evening. And again, as manager Zudma alluded to, we have endeavored to split the various VE options that we looked at at the last meeting into two general buckets. One that we understood that you were not interested at this time, which is shown in the gray at the right, and the other bucket on the left in the green are the items that we believe you were potentially interested in and had some questions, and we're looking so for some variations on these. And obviously, as the conversation progresses, we can consider shifting items back and forth at the will of the council. So the items in green, as I said, are the ones that we understand you are interested in to some extent with some additional information. So what we've done is prepared a series of slides to walk through some of these items. The first one here is pertaining to the theater equipment package for the stage. As you might recall from last time, we had a $750,000 potential deduct, and that was to eliminate all town-owned equipment upfront with purchased items. And the request was to see if there might be any way to split up some components of that package. So we're back here for you tonight. What's included in the theater package, that $750,000 value, is a movable rigging system. That includes four trusses that are on winches that can be mechanically raised and lowered for operation, modifications to lighting, so on and so forth. It included the lighting system itself, which would be the lighting, the soundboard, and all the wiring associated with it. It included a sound system, which would be a canopy suspended speaker system, which is a shaped array to control the sound to some extent to the lawn, as well as the soundboard and supporting wiring and systems. It included a projection system and included a lot of just miscellaneous connectors, security components, things like that. So in reviewing the package with the theater package designer, the big feedback that we landed on is we think we can eliminate the movable aspect of the rigging system. That is, we would still provide four trusses, but they would be fixed in place, meaning you would be on a lift to adjust lighting over time, and that's a pretty good savings of about $200,000. There is not a great way to split up any of the other components because there are too many interrelated piece, parts and pieces to how it all operates. Yes, sir?
Mayor Pretend Garamella, please.
Yeah, I hear the savings, but my question is, the fixed rigging system instead of the motorized trusses, can they be retrofitted later or is it like, once you put it, you're done?
It's a great question, and the answer is yes. We can put in raceways to allow for future wiring to be in place. We will have hang points, two hang points, one at each end of each truss anyway, and those can be swapped out with motorized winches in the future if you so desire.
Okay, is this the only way they do it or like all the, do all the amphitheaters have this kind of system or there are other systems, you know?
It's a good question. There are examples of both. The advantage of a motorized rigging system is that when you want to change or adjust lights, you're lowering the truss to the ground, so all of your operation adjustments are occurring at grade, not on lifts. The trade-off with the fixed truss is you would have to have a lift, which could live in the storage building that you have, and anytime you're adjusting lighting for a show, you would be bringing your crew out, they would be accessing it via lift to do.
What's the cost of the lift?
So depending on whether you're new or used, and there are options for both, at this height, you're probably in the $30, $40, $50,000 range for a lift. And to be honest, you will probably want a lift for a theater anyway, with or without the movable trusses. And also, if it helps, the, we do have the cost of the lift factored into some FFNE, some loose items within the overall project budget already.
No, the only reason I asked about lift was if the cost is around $100,000.
Correct.
Then what's the point of having the lift? We can have motorized and get it over. That's okay, if the lift is needed for something else, fine.
Councilmember Body, please.
What's the effect likely to be on production quality?
There should not be any noticeable difference in production quality with either system.
Even without the sound system and the projection system? Would the projection system, I don't know what any of this is, the projection system, would that be something that we'd be using for like movies in the park or is it just to project sound across the lawn?
Got it. So the projection, so within the $750,000 theater package, it includes roughly $45,000 for projection. That is a projector as well as a frame-mounted screen that can either sit on the floor or be suspended from the canopy above. So that's providing you the equipment to be able to project a film or other video onto a screen. And then the sound system is a separate line item, which would include the speakers and the controls.
Okay, and we can't, you said that we can't really break up and get just the projection system without all the other things?
So for instance, you could purchase only the projection system. That's about, again, about a $45,000 number, but that would not have any sound associated with it then.
Ouch, I see your point there. Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Two questions. I forgot what the first one was. Oh, first question, wouldn't we already have a lift that we could use? Do we have to buy a new one? I would think that's something we already would have.
Good evening, council, Jeffrey Brown, excuse me, Polite Works Director. Currently, we do not have a lift. We are in the process of looking to acquire one, either with some funds that come available this year or for next fiscal year.
Okay.
It has multiuses for us for changing banners, replacing ballfield lots, so we have a need for one, so.
What do you got, never mind. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then my other question was, so have we eliminated the option of renting the theater equipment?
I think that's entirely up to the will of council. So we've got two options on the table. The one that you saw at the last meeting would be a $750,000 savings to go with all rented equipment, and this option is the hybrid, which is trying to reduce that cost, and you're saving about $200,000.
Okay, I mean, that's still a good chunk. I'm still open to the option of leasing the theater equipment and buying it later, so. Put it on layaway.
Did you have another thought, Councilmember Body on this one? Okay. Would you like me to move on to the next item?
All right, you guys. Just scroll. Yeah. Okay. We believe the other, next item in question was the potential inlay of an M in the intersection at Carolina and Foxglove. This is just an enlarged graphic to show what that is, and again, just a placeholder for tonight's conversation.
We can paint it later.
Councilmember Scrowng, Johnson, please.
So I was guilty of saying I like the M, so I'll just put it out there. I still like the M, but it is not a showstopper for me. We can always do something on a later date. We can do a brick-inlay, you know, later on, so I'm okay to, to let that go for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Body, please.
I also kind of wanted the M. What would be, is there really an option to do a brick-inlay later on? If there is, then, then fine, but that feels like something that would be more than $35,000.
We could, and I could also invite Kim Lee Horn up if they'd like to speak to any of the site components.
Hey there, Melissa Brand with Kim Lee Horn. I'm landscape architect and working on this project. So the M, it could be added at a later date. I think that you will end up paying more to add it at a later date because you will be building something and then having to remove it in order to add it later. It just makes things more complicated. It can certainly be done, but I think you will incur more costs doing it that way.
I mean, I can live without it. I just think we should realize that if we say, don't put it in at the start, really what we're saying is we're getting it. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
There were two items in question related to the retail plaza in Block A. So this slide speaks to the landscape curb. So there was a proposed deduct to take a granite landscape curb, which is shown in the middle image at the right, down to a stone or cast stone curb in blue, which is shown in the bottom right. And in the graphic that you're seeing, the areas highlighted in yellow represent the extent of the curb in question.
Could you make the screen a little bit smaller so you can see the entire thing, including the savings?
Oh, sorry. There you go.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Fender, please.
I think this was one of my questions, and I'm glad, I like how you put these pictures in here and showed also where it's going to be located. Actually, for almost $100,000 savings, I kind of like the stone landscape curb better anyway.
Okay. Sounds like a home run.
All right. The second item on this slide, there were two items related to pavers, which are the area shown in purple. So the first recommendation on this slide is to do a paver area in, on aggregate base as opposed to concrete base. And I'm going to go ahead and jump to the next slide because we have two related items. And then also, the same area here toned in orange this time, the suggestion is to replace 50%, roughly 50% of the pavers in the orange area with concrete. So we would have a mix of pavers and concrete as a further cost reduction.
What is that going to look like?
We actually think that it could actually look nicer to have it broken up a little bit so it's not just from like curb to curb, all pavers. So the design hasn't really been finalized yet. It really kind of was predicated on the direction from you all. But I think that we would do it in a way that, you know, either the walkways are pavers and where the tables might be is concrete or vice versa. But I think breaking that up could actually give it a little bit more interest rather than just pavers. So there's some cost savings and, and it could just give it a little bit more character.
Mayor Pretend Garamella, please.
I'm a little confused with this, so what am I looking at in this picture? Because I'm looking at the top view, so I'm not able to understand that.
So are you able to see my cursor on the screen?
Yeah.
So this area that I'm outlining in the orange or tan color, in the original design, is all clay pavers. And what we're proposing is to do a hybrid design here, which would be roughly a 50% concrete and 50% paver mix within this.
And what is the structure there? The white one?
This is the multifamily building and the mixed-use retail component that you're looking at. So the park is down here, off the screen to the bottom.
Yeah, but why are we doing that? It should be not the same construction doing that because like...
No, that was, that's always been part of the overall park development. This is actually, we're calling it like a retail park, pocket park, and then it also gets integrated in with the, the streetscape design that goes between the library and, and the multifamily building itself also. So there's, there's pavers in this area as well, and there's strong lights and there's planters, and it's, it's to enhance this whole, this whole area along the library as well.
If we didn't want to do it, what would, what would happen?
If, if...
If we, if like, if the town decides we don't want to do that part?
I think it would take greater discussions because it's, it was always part of the overall park area to include this section.
And how much is the cost of this entire section?
Boy, that was on an earlier... We're looking at the orange, the... Yeah, one, just over a million, that third line from the bottom, Block A Retail Plaza.
And how many square feet is that?
I don't have that at my fingertips.
Okay, because if I can get more informed on that, because I'm looking at the value of what we're getting for a million there is like a pocket park. What will people, other than ambience you're trying to create, what is that really value that I'm getting out of it?
Well, while Todd is looking for that, Mayor Pretend Garamella, so that is our area to develop. We could do something different than the pavers, but the way that the performance structured and the way that our support of this project is structured, that area is ours to develop. So, you know, portion of that is going to be the retail space or the commercial space that we're leasing, the 4,000 square feet is there, and then there's about another 10,000 square feet, I believe, that would be leased out to other, you know, retail. That could end up being a restaurant, that could end up being something else. You've seen some imagery, and I think we may have it in here somewhere, that shows you some outdoor seating out in front of that and, and really just sort of a casual play area, you know, you could... You know, you could see some, right now, if you go by the library most any afternoon, you'll see a group of people that are out there, that are sort of congregating there and just, you know, spending time together on the benches there. So you could see some of that type of activity, I think, up in front of where our space leased would be and whatever that retail business might be. Again, it's also just sort of an attractive portion to make that a little more part of what's going on, rather than just a flat sidewalk, is what we're doing there.
I, I hear you. You know, we are, we are a tenant there, right? We are, we are going to rent 4,000 square feet. So as a tenant, is the owner does it or the tenant does it? That's what I'm looking at.
Well, I think there's, there's two separate components there. You know, as a tenant, we'll get a tenant improvement allowance. We'll get a TIA within the 4,000 square feet to outfit that. But this portion out in front is separate from that rental. This is an area that we've committed to developing as a, basically, we've talked about it as a retail plaza. We're using the terminology pocket park now, in part because that's how we're going to fund it, is through some parks funds to do that related with, you know, the infrastructure around it. But it, but it's our area to develop as part of the project. So it's really not a question of whether we do something with it, it's a question of what do we do with it? And so the, and again, in trying to activate that space and have it be, again, that gathering point concept, this is another spot where people would be drawn to gather because of outdoor seating and because of what we would develop there.
Okay, I think maybe I, like, I was more concentrating on this town park development that I didn't keep attention to the other side, like, other than seeing the 4,000 retail. So, but if it is coming to a million dollars, I don't know, it's just too much. But again, that's my choice. Okay, no, move on.
Can I speak?
Councilmember Fender, please.
So we've already looked at this part of the design a couple of times, and there was no opposition to it. So to go back and say we don't need it now sets us back. Do you have a slide that you can pull up that shows that, that space from, I don't know what you'd call it, elevation view? You've had it on past slides.
There was a rendering in prior presentations. I don't know if it's loaded on here or not. But...
Are you good?
Yes.
Yeah. And tables where people can gather.
Right.
So that was the whole point of this area.
So the paved or even the, if we do a concrete and paver combination, that area is a little bit over 4,000 square feet of just the paved area, and then there's landscape area as well. And then just one last thing to note, everything that you're looking at here, that shade in either this kind of tan, salmony color, and then this, this blue, that's also town-owned property. So that's not, this is not property up to say like what the right-of-way may be, like typical. This area is not going to be owned by Singh. So that's another reason why the town would, would be paying for those costs there as well.
Thank you. So why don't we go back to our slide and just, I don't think anyone had any issues unless I'm mistaken with the value engineering you're suggesting? Because it sounds like it may actually improve it aesthetically. Am I wrong there? So I think we can move on to the next slide. Okay, thank you all. I think it's in our heads, but thank you.
This slide is another placeholder. This is the, kind of the signature sign out on Town Hall Drive, and this is in here as it's a relatively easy option to add at any point in time, so.
No, is that what we're doing right now?
I, I think that's kind of what we're doing. If we have a problem with something being removed, we should speak up. I think that's how...
Yeah, because silence is not consent. I thought we were just reviewing them and then we were gonna...
We can have a full discussion at the end, too, if we want to go back to each one.
No.
But it might be better to just go ahead and take them one at a time.
All right, I'm not in favor of doing this one at a later date.
Okay.
Same.
Okay.
I am in favor. I think, I don't think we need a sign for this area. I think the area is going to be a sign in itself, and then we can add something later. I'm fine with cost savings here.
Well, I want to circle back to Councilmember Fender and Robati if they want to expand on their statement a little bit, like, Councilmember Johnson did, if you choose to. Okay?
I'm good either way. But as long as, so we go back two slides, I'm not in favor of doing pavers and concrete.
Okay, let's finish the one signed first because we're on that right now, and then we'll, we'll circle back. Because you're right, I didn't make it clear in the beginning that that was kind of my understanding. I think Councilmember, Mayor Pretem Garamella, and then I'll recognize you.
Mine's about process, Mayor, and I think it's not about this. Respectfully, we are running over time. I want to time box this to kind of see how far we can get in a certain amount of time respect to the applicant. I don't want to, I don't think it's, I'm ready to go for hours and hours. I, I really think this is a couple hour session because of the very critical items here. But my energy level is not going to be the same at midnight as it is today, and I, I think we should maybe look at this for another hour and see how far we get through this list. I appreciate you trying to get as much consensus as possible for every item. I just think we're not doing it in the most efficient way. And I don't know what the efficient way is, but I just feel like every item should not take 20 minutes.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Yes, so why don't we finish this one with the assumption that we will speak up if you have a problem with it being removed, if we're okay with that process? And then we'll circle back to the other few and just knock them out real quick because I think we already have our ideas about those. Mayor Pretem Garamella, did you have a thought about the sign?
Yeah, what were we planning to put? Morrisville or the name or what, the naming brand?
It's a great question. It could be branded for Morrisville, or it could be branded for the name of the park. That has not yet been determined.
Then I would, I would keep it because that is the gateway to the park, you know? That's mine.
Okay, so we have three in favor of keeping it in the plan, and Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Now I'd like to comment on the element.
Please do.
I think it's very important that we have a sign that identifies this as the park, the downtown. And we don't have this visible from Morrisville Carpenter Road. And it's more prominent from Town Hall Drive, but we want to invite people in and we want people to be excited. So this sign is very important as a gateway and recognition of the downtown.
Thank you. So we have four in favor of putting it back in the program. Would anyone else like to make a comment before we move on? Wonderful. Okay, so that one goes back in.
Okay.
If you would indulge us and go back to the first one, and we'll just go ahead and essentially do straw vote real quick. So for process, please speak up now if you have a problem with implementing these $200, $200,000 cost savings. Okay, we're good? Next one? Does anyone have a problem getting rid of the M? I think we heard from a couple of people that they'd like to keep the M. Anyone else?
I'd like to keep the M. I'm just thinking from a, it sounds corny, but from a drone point of view. If someone's got a drone, you know, or we have a drone to introduce our new park, you know, you come over flying across that thing, it looks pretty cool to have that M there. Part of our branding.
That's part of what I love about the Stormwater right on Town Hall Drive, the fact that we do that. So Reedsville, I know, has a really nice one that they use, so I'm also in favor of putting this back in the program.
Yeah.
So that's two.
Three.
That's three. Not in favor.
I think he said she was in favor.
And you're in favor, okay. So, so that one goes back into the program, please.
Okay.
So, the next one. How, does anyone have a problem with implementing these two cost savings? Okay, that's a good slide. I think you explained that really well. Now we're back to this one. Are we okay with 50% of the pavers in this area adding perhaps a little more character to the design? Okay, I think we're good with this one.
Is it a stamped concrete or what is it? Like, can't you do a stamped concrete to match the paver style?
We typically, it's possible, but I think the logic here in general is this area is going to be filled with tables and umbrellas and things, so a lot of the paving would be covered anyway. So the logic is to focus the paving in areas where it will remain visible and let it go to concrete in other areas to save cost and honestly, to be easier to clean.
Yeah, sounds...
But in addition to that, and specifically, this cost savings is to just do regular broom-faced concrete.
Okay, I think we're good with this. Value engineering, sir, thank you. We're keeping that back into the program, and now we're at this one.
Okay.
So you'll explain this first.
And a couple of these are interrelated. So we were looking at potentially up to two signs for interactive electronic signage or art. There are a couple of different examples down below, and these are two of the three locations that were integrated into the building. So on the left, you're looking at the support building, which is behind the stage, and this is the elevation facing north on Foxglove. And then in the image at the right, you're looking at the toilet facility, the comfort station, and this is the elevation facing Foxglove. We're going to look at a separate component, just so you're not confused, that is kind of the Art Deco architectural steel component, and those are really trellises or components that enliven the elevations and in these cases are integrated with the art signage, but they are two separate items that we will be looking at. Does that help so far for an explanation?
I think so. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, your thoughts on this slide?
I actually really appreciate this visualization because I was like, eh, we don't need the electronic signage when I was looking through it at the last time we mentioned this item. However, I see potential in here for saving resources. We do a lot of banners, we do a lot of physical signage, we do a lot of things. If we had electronic signage, we could have a lot of flexibility in providing information to people in this area and being able to quickly update things. One of our challenges is getting the word out quick. What if something is suspended or delayed or if there's an issue? We could quickly program electronic signage to communicate to the people at the site. So I think although it's $100,000, we would save in materials and, and improve efficiency of operations potentially with this feature. Thank you.
Councilmember Robati, please.
I don't necessarily disagree with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, but I feel like we're going in the wrong direction here. Like, everything can't stay in. So, I mean, if we, if we want to keep the electronic signage, which, you know, again, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson made some great points about the electronic signage. I think maybe we should think about not doing the sign right now. I mean, everything can't stay in. That's the point of this whole exercise. That's all I have. I'm neutral, really, to be honest with you on which one we choose, but...
Mayor Pretem Garamella, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
So I can't remember when I went to one of these NCLM conferences that they sell these kind of signs. I've seen many vendors who do these things, and I, I feel this is a plug-and-play kind of a thing. It's not needed at the start. At the same time, this is a potential where you can get sponsorship, you know, like, the person who wants to own it, like, can say like, I'm just out of words, say Publix. Okay, the Publix will say there, and it's their sign, and so that they have theirs, we have ours, whatever it is. So I think those things can be worked out later when we have our, what do you say, like, a sponsorship and can come at a plug-and-play kind of a thing. It's not a structural change that is important that needs to be there, so I don't need it right now.
Would you be okay if it was prewired, though?
Yeah, prewiring everything is, anyway, has to be prewired, but it's a good thought to be prewired in it.
Right, I think we should be very clear. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I agree with what Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson is saying, but I think for $100,000, this is something we can wait to do later. I do like how you provided the visuals. It did help me a lot understand what you were speaking of, but I think we can wait till later to do this.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So remind us again, Brandon, are all of these items that you all talked about that would not take away from the overall feel and impact of the area, or in some cases, improve upon what we're trying to do? And are they also, or are they also things that can easily be brought back again?
So the, I would say, to your last question, the majority of these can be brought back. I mean, you've heard a little bit of potential challenge with the M inlay as an example, but I think there's interest in potentially keeping that. So if you look at what we're talking about here, you know, these message boards, I do think they add something to the project, and I think they're, they're good for quick information, they can be changed quickly, they can be done, you know, very attractively. But yes, they could certainly be added later. I think we would, we would absolutely, you know, wire for them, have the conduit, whatever we need there to have them ready to go, but they could be added back later. I would say the majority of what we're talking about could be added back later. And again, that's where I think we, we have some potential to do that. I just can't guarantee any of that to you tonight or August 27th that we would have it. But I have some level of comfort that some of that money could materialize, whether through its through grants or related to the bond sale or other things, that there could be funds. And again, but you would have to consider, is that what you want to spend that money on? Some of that could be semi-restricted to what we're doing, but some of it's not necessarily restricted. And again, you know, there's the million-dollar ask through Congresswoman Ross. Well, if that comes, that's for Town Center, end of story. But then there's, you know, other things. If you were to get some sponsorship, you know, that's another option for you, could specifically fund things here, you know, and maybe the sign is sponsored by somebody, maybe these are sponsored by somebody. So there's certainly an opportunity for that going forward. And then there's, you know, a couple of others that are much less sure, that I don't even want to talk about them right now until we have a little more information to bring them back and suggest they could be options.
Okay, thank you. Because I agree with Councilmember Robati. I think we're going in the wrong direction. I'm, I'm fine, and I don't disagree that this signage or the signage for the park would be important one day, but I, I don't need them today.
Councilmember Fender? So if no one else speaks, what did you hear on this one?
I think I heard we're going to provide conduit and hope that some other funding sources maybe come through to add this back at a later date.
Sounds reasonable. Next slide.
Okay, this is the related item that I mentioned. So what you're seeing highlighted here in green is kind of an art steel component that enlivens the facade facing Foxglove and introduces some amenities like the integral bench. That's about $35,000 worth of material. This is a view kind of looking down Foxglove a little bit. So one option obviously would be to remove or delay this. This would be that elevation of the toilet room building facing Foxglove with the steel removed. So one opportunity could be to come back with some mural or some other option for that area.
Councilmember Robati, please.
I am in favor of getting rid of this one and putting mural about, as many murals around the town. If this provides a sort of mural opportunity, I think it's, any way you look at that, it's going to be more attractive on the Foxglove side of it. If this provides sort of mural opportunity, I think it's, any way you look at that, it's been a little more attractive on the Foxglove side of it. The bench, I have the bench.
Okay, so if anyone, no one else speaks up, we're taking advantage of the savings. Okay, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
I agree with the removal and the mural opportunity. How much does a standard bench cost? You know?
Standard bench is street furniture.
Yes.
Anywhere from a few hundred bucks to a few thousand bucks.
Okay, so there is a significant change, you know, between, if we wanted to have a bench outside the bathroom, it'd be a couple thousand dollars. That seems reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're realizing that savings. Thank you.
This slide is to represent the parking lot back by the education garden along Town Hall Drive. So, one of the options discussed last time was potentially changing out the paving in there for asphalt. There is another variant here showing that potential, if we end up with an aggregate finish in the Grove area, that there are some coatings and options that do come with some maintenance requirements as an option for that. This was an item that we, honestly, I think the majority of you were probably not super keen on. But again, trying to provide some reasonable numbers, this is a pretty big number, which is why we just wanted to make sure we revisited it.
So, what you're saying is, this is what it would look like?
So, the image at left is an example of taking a paving parking area to a standard asphalt. And the image at right is an example of a standard asphalt with what's called a chip seal or a tar and chip finish on top of it, which is intended to look more like an aggregate or gravel finish, which might be similar to what occurs in the Grove and the pedestrian areas. So, it's a way to make it softer and more informal. It does have some maintenance trade-offs associated with it.
So, just to be clear, so to save the 350, it'll end up looking like it is on the left.
Correct.
That's after the savings. So, it's essentially what's outside the food hub now, just a regular parking lot.
That's correct.
So, if we're okay with that, we move on, but if someone's on something different. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
So, I think the objection by the council was that we wanted to have a look and feel for, that you're entering the Town Center and the standard parking lot doesn't say that. That says you're entering like the Chamber parking lot or, you know, some of the other normal parking lots. I like the option that is rather inexpensive of adding a topping that kind of gives maybe a similar coloring or a texture that's a little different than our standard parking lot, just because it will give the visual experience of transitioning into a different environment. So, I think there's some potential there with that top coat.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. I like the chip top coat, just because it does look like it's gravel, has a nicer appearance. I am concerned about the increased maintenance. Brandon has something to say about that.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we, again, we're, we're trying to show you as many options as we can because we want you to appreciate that we're not just, you know, quickly trying to dismiss things. And so, we heard you last time, and we, I think we heard that, you know, your desire was not a standard asphalt parking lot. But again, and we've included it here because I think, as Fred said, this is a big dollar savings. And if we're going to try to remove the type of savings that I think you are interested in, we have to do this. There, this is, this is a big chunk of what would come out. So, we've shown you on the right what it could be. I would say it's not necessarily our recommendation, and I would say that on behalf of the Public Works Director, who has made sure that I'm aware that this, this is significant ongoing maintenance. So, there's a cost to that in, in people time, there's a cost to that in updating and protecting the product. Heard what you said, and again, we will, we will, you know, certainly take your advice. But I need to say out loud that that would not be our staff recommendation because of the heavy maintenance overtime. Thank you.
So, is there a third option where it is more like asphalt, but do something?
The challenge is, and I'll invite Melissa if she'd like to come up and weigh in on this. There's a pretty big gap between an asphalt parking lot and a paving parking lot. And there aren't a lot of real material options between the two that are on the lower end of the cost factor.
As Melissa comes up, I mean, I think we could look at, you know, perhaps some different coloring of the striping or things like that, that, now, that, again, that's still going to look like a parking lot. I'm not trying to sell you something, but if, if you wanted to have it not be as standard as other parking lots, that's an option. But I'll let Melissa speak to product.
Yeah, I think that, you know, all of your questions and considerations are good things to bring up. We have looked at a lot of different options when we put this together tonight. Decorative concrete was considered. That still does have a significant cost associated with it over something like standard concrete. There are also some negatives to that. Like, if there did need to be some sort of maintenance in the parking lot where they had to cut out part of it, it's pretty impossible to match a material like that. So, I think that the two options on the screen are probably your best options to move forward with, just considering all the things like maintenance, overall cost. And I understand that, you know, you don't want it to look like a typical parking lot because this is a really special space. But I think if you did have to give somewhere, this is probably a really good option to do that, especially when you consider the location of this parking lot, where it's at, kind of near the back of the stage and the community garden. Just on the other side of that intersection that's kind of created entering this parking lot, you're going to have a standard parking lot over there as well that will look like the image on the left of the screen. So, I think, you know, you still will have the really nice streetscape for all of Foxglove and then all the sidewalks on Carolina Street if you are able to give up something like this small parking lot to save some costs. Does that help?
Yeah, I can go with that. I understand.
Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too. I don't, I, I just, I would love it if you could afford a, you know, a very nice parking lot, but I, I think a parking lot is a, I'm really interested in whether you want or not.
Councilmember Johnson, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I'm good with this, too. I, I think this is going to be, this is like a, it's, it, this is the parking lot where the stage crew will park, where the, the garden folks, you know, trucks. And so, I, I actually think it's better as asphalt, quite frankly.
Mayor Pretam Garamella?
I don't know, we're going in circles, you know? We have our UDO where we say it has to be asphalt, and now we are giving a texture of non-asphalt tile. And, you know, trying to negate our UDO and making it more complicated, I think, asphalt is, let's go with it.
Looks like we're looking to realize that 315,000 of savings. Is that what you heard?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on.
No. These are a couple smaller savings, but that did generate a lot of discussion when we last met. This is to show we have two skylight areas. This is the elevation of the toilet building facing the park. As you can see here, the goal is to create a very inviting entry. You can see the sunlight from above. This is the floor plan. And what is in the base price is a long linear skylight that looks something like this image in the upper right corner. And this one is simply a savings to change a large skylight into, say, like a smaller round skylight. So, there would still be some top light in this space, but it's a more modest skylight.
Can we please keep the skylight?
Councilmember Fender, Councilmember Robati both want to keep it. I'd be okay keeping it. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I think it looks nice.
Councilmember Garamella?
How, how can you take, can you take three inches or four inches of stuff?
Yes, sir.
When was the last time you saw fridge and some snuff around here? I hear you, I hear you.
There's engineers that do this all the time.
Okay, so just keeping focused, we've heard that three people want to keep this rectangular. Unless we hear one more, it's going to round. So, we're keeping it, keeping rectangular according to Councilmember Robati. So, next one? It's in the middle, it's between them both.
This is in the entry. And then, similarly, this is the support building. Within the support building, in this end, we have a green room area. This is kind of showing the makeup area. I apologize, the rendering is missing the mirrors here. But we also currently have a skylight above the theater counter, the makeup counter within the green.
Councilmember Fender?
Oh, well, I meant to take that down, but I'm okay with eliminating this one. But you would replace it with this round skylight?
We could. This, what this number represents is just a simple removal of the skylight, and this is a value judgment that this area is used less often. But the in-between would be to replace it with a simple smaller skylight if the council so desires.
What would that cost to be?
So, that would be a $10,000 to $15,000 savings.
Okay, so to make it clear, do we want $25,000 or $15,000 savings? Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
I think there's no natural light in this building unless we put a skylight in there. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I, I think it would be nice to have a little natural light. Otherwise, we're always going to use energy to light the area, so...
Yeah, she brings up a good point. I agree with...
Okay, so, round or rectangular then?
For me, it, it's a, you know, how much time are you spending there? And most of the events are in the evening when there's no sun. I really don't care, like, you know, how much time we're spending there. It's not like day events, and there's light that is sufficient.
Okay, so you want it to go away completely? Councilmember Robati?
I'm also fine with it going away completely. I think if you're doing makeup in there or, I mean, that's what you use a green room for, is makeup and that kind of stuff. And I think that honestly, light from a skylight is going to be, that's like the worst possible light for that kind of space. I'm fine with it going away.
Okay, anyone else have any more comments? Okay, sounds like that's a total elimination. Is that what you heard?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on.
So, this was a summary of the options as prevent, as presented, which obviously, we are looking at not taking all of these options. So, I think what would be most helpful, jump to the last slide and see what the total is, or are we trying to math out?
Yeah, let's leave you to the last slide and then we'll go back to where we actually are.
So, the original overall ROM, the 19.4 million, was the construction number. The total VE savings was 1.132, but we are looking at taking a portion of these savings. So, overall, as presented, the savings on the screen that we walked through would have resulted in a cost reduction of, you know, roughly 1.3, 1.4 million dollars. And then, with the remaining contingencies, the remaining escalation and the management fee, we're looking at a total project cost of 18.78 million. Now, I'd say we're going to be a little over 19 with what we're talking about. Yeah.
Well, if you go up to the next slide, I think it's only about, yeah, 18, 900.
We only kept in, we only kept in 10,000 and 35,000.
I thought we had the sign also that we put back in, and that's 125.
Yeah, you're right.
So...
That's still less than 200,000.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you agree? It was just those three items?
I do.
So, if you guys could summarize for us, and then we can move to the next spot.
Yes, I think that what, what I heard was you're okay with the, with the porch, you're okay with the M. Again, that the porch easily comes back, the pocket pavers you're okay with, along with the landscape.
So, when you're saying you're okay with, that's not clear. Like, so, the 200, the 200,000 savings stays?
Yes.
The 35,000 stay, doesn't stay?
Correct. The 35,000 is out. The pocket paver change to aggregate stays. The landscape curb stays. The pocket park pavers stays. I, we heard, I think, a mixed bag on the sign, because I think there were some folks that wanted to keep it, but then there was others that, I think, later, so I think the sign is, is...
We had four for the sign.
To stay.
Yeah.
So, that, so you want to do the sign. So, that's 125,000 of savings that is, that comes out. And then, the electric signage is, is going to be delayed. The restroom building, you are okay with the steel screen. The parking lot, you are perhaps reluctantly...
The steel screen is...
The saving stays in there.
The saving stays, right.
So, the, the parking lot saving stays in there. The restroom building for the, the $10,000, I think you said, just leave alone because it's only $10,000. So, that's 10,000 that's coming out. That's the sign, that's 135,000. And then, the skylight, I think we heard a mix, but if we pull, if we leave that to be eliminated, so I think we've, you've pulled out 170,000.
Right. So, so the 170, and then factoring in the contingency, the escalation, some of the other stuff. I was calculating 200 or a little over $200,000 pulled out of the total, which would put us at about 19 million, maybe slightly above, maybe slightly under.
Whatever.
It's okay.
Yeah.
They're still numbers, you don't know the final.
We would need to run the math.
It would be double price.
But it's roughly 19 million.
Okay, I think that was a good exercise for us. We'll be bringing back the final number on the 27th, all firmed up.
Yes, and so what I would suggest is let us move into Jean's presentation with Tom supporting that. And again, you've seen a lot of that. I don't think this is, you know, more than a 20 or 30-minute conversation, we can move through that so that you, because I think we need that guidance to be able to come back to you the 27th and ideally have you comfortable with potentially taking action.
I need to go...
Yeah, well, can we take a five-minute break first, and then we'll come on back? Okay, and then we'll stop.
Come on, man. Can't leave, you're in charge.
Can't leave, you're in trouble.
The total sort of town center scenario and maybe you land a little bit below that, which only is going to help the cash flow here. But we've got that fully accounted for between debt funding under column D of about 49 million, cash funding, just under 10 million, and total funding for these projects of 59. And you'll notice in the very bottom right corner, we have two bond issues that are running through this scenario. The first is the general obligation bonds we're about to issue, the 22.2 million. And the second is a $27 million bond for the public works facility. So both of those are fully incorporated into this scenario through debt and then again, the ability to contribute some cash for other components of the capital plan. All right? Stop me if you have a question or anything you want to clarify. As it relates to this plan, one thing I know you all are sensitive to and we talked quite a bit with staff about is how does all of this fit within the town's debt capacity? Has it fit within our debt policies? The short answer is it all works. It all works through your debt profile just fine and maintains compliance with your policies. In the upper left, you want to be at or slightly above that red line and you are. On the upper right, you want to be below the red line and you would be. And in the bottom left, you'd like to be at or below the red line. Might be a year or two where you're a little bit above it. That is well within, I think, the spirit of the policies where you can make an exception if that's necessary. I will also note, we've modeled this all fairly conservatively. So lower expense growth expectations, higher interest rate expectations. So it may well be that that works itself out without any exception needed. But even if it were, that's not something that is going to put your bond rating in any sort of jeopardy and you already have provided yourselves the latitude to make that sort of an exception in your policy document. So I would consider that to be just fine, if you will, and no reason to second guess what you might be planning to do with your projects. All right? So the capacity is there. It works in your model, works in your policies. This one's a little hard to see, but it's the affordability. And what the key takeaway is, all of this plan that we've talked about is fully accommodated for in the way that you budget for debt and capital. You have a very transparent, very uniform means or methodology of budgeting for debt, service, both existing debt and the new debt that's running through our model. This is a confirmation that, you know, you continue to have a good planning process. I believe in the fiscal '25 budget, you dedicated another penny's worth of revenue. So that bolstered the revenues available for this program. You have been setting aside some cash over the years to provide a little bit of cushion. That cushion will remain under the projections. You can see that on the very far right column. So one, as your existing debt pays down, you're taking advantage of that. You're backfilling with new debt. You've got reserves set aside, very healthy level of capital reserves in addition to your unassigned fund balance in the general fund and dedicated tax revenue, particularly with an additional penny that was put in place. So you are affording this plan and, you know, the thing with the CIP is a year rolls off, a year rolls on. It was not unreasonable to expect you may be talking about another potential bond referendum in the future. And this sets you up to be able to do that out in the 20, what did we decide, 28, 29 timeframe. So the affordability works at the modeling that we've talked about thus far. Capacity is good, affordability is good.
I'm going to add here, this is where we talked last time about those proactive decisions that council has made over the several years of establishing reserves, of really having a dedicated strategy with use of debt and re-leveraging those retired debts. Those hard decisions that you made with reprioritizing projects and putting town center first, these are all strategies that are now coming to play today for you to be able to effectively make a decision, not on one project, but on a five-year plan, to be able to have the fundability in place. So again, your proactive strategies and decisions that you've made in the past have now come full circle today to put you in, I think, an opportune position to be able to move forward within the spectrum of 19 to 18 million.
That's right. And this is all information we've shared with the rating agencies, with the local government commission. It was all very well received, not putting it out to them that it's final, it's obviously subject to your approval, but they're all aware of these plans, that this is the direction we may be heading in. And again, we have a very high level of confidence that, you know, there's no negative impact on your bond rating and it will be a very well-received issuance when the time comes in September.
Wait, wait, what was the red over in the column on cash flow where we're going to be, it looks to me like we're going to be in the red on cash flow there, which concerns me.
Well, you're going to be a little short in certain years if all of this plays out, but that's why you have the reserves that you have accumulated, which will be available to supplement your debt budget for those years. So if indeed those years were a little short, now keep in mind, we've been conservative in our growth assumptions for revenue, we've been conservative in our interest rate assumption for the debt, but nonetheless, there are four or five years where current year revenues might need to be supplemented by that capital reserve. And even with that, you're maintaining a capital reserve balance in excess of a million. So it is, that in and of itself is not a negative or a problem. It is something that we knew might exist and that's why you've been setting aside the cash so that you can supplement your budget in those years and everything is paid for.
So it's not the kind of thing where we would have to adjust the operational budget to cover this, for example?
No, not at all. The money is there. Think of it this way, it's sort of, if you had to get through a two or three-year period and you're just supplementing your income with a little bit of reserves that you've banked in prior years, no adjustment to the operating budget would be needed.
Okay. So Jeanie, what, how confident are, in here you have the public works facility at 27 million. How confident are we with that number and what happens if that number goes higher?
It's already 35.
So I can't speak to the cost estimating other than current efforts with the CIP team has led us to the $27 million number. Now, here's the reason why we said, look at the big picture. And we, when you were at the 20 million, we were saying that you were leveraging more cash that you potentially needed to retain or preserve some of that in the cash reserves or your capital reserves, to be able to have that flexibility, to be nimble, because we know we have this large project with public works coming forward. And in this economy, the possibility exists that you could have some inflationary factors. At the spectrum of 19 to 18 million, in a conservative debt model where we have debt and use of cash reserves that you've been committed to putting aside and we reject forward and escalate those numbers, it is that we have the ability to be able to cover on that spectrum, the reasonability for having that, maintaining that flexibility for public works if there were to have some escalation in the same way you see with town center. Now, again, it comes to vision and value on that spectrum to affordability in the big picture of things and finding that balance of where you're comfortable. But we can confidently say on the 19 million end of the spectrum, you have a model based on conservative projections that allow you to have public works at 27 million and still retain some cash reserves that allow you to still have the flexibility and be nimble without burdening your fund balance that is already robust. Again, you have cash reserves that we're leaving some portion even at 19 million to be able to utilize for future projects if it should come to that. And we are not touching, in this model, fund balance. Does that answer your question?
Yes, but you know, the price tag for that project has been all over the place. So that concerns me that that could escalate more, well more than 27 million. But, you know, and at this point, all you can do is estimate like you have and then we
Estimate
Deal with it as we move forward.
Estimate and use conservative models and know that you have these extra tools in your toolkit to be able to work within those numbers or work forward and address any unforeseen or escalating numbers in future projects. Is that fair, fair to say?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I mean, we've tried to, what's the right word, under-promise and over-deliver. I think, I do believe there's some upside in all of this planning work. I mean, not unlimited amounts, but there's a number of places where you could find some positive variance that would allow you to manage through a slightly higher project, you know, within reason.
Okay.
The last slide I want to cover just goes back to, not goes back, but looks at the forward-looking five-year capital improvement plan. Again, I apologize for the small type. A couple of things that I think are important. The projects are listed on the top half of the chart through line 20. And obviously, this gets revisited every year. Projects are prioritized or reprioritized, costs are updated. But this represents a little over $90 million worth of projects over a five-year period. What I think's important is the bottom half of this. In the green box is the general obligation debt we're about to issue, right? That's the 22 million. The next several lines, lines 26 through 33, represent various cash contributions. Current year revenues, accumulated revenues, it's a very broad bucket of cash. And that's a strength, and I think Jeanie was alluding to it, is your ability to be able to look forward and commit to that level of cash funding. And at the very bottom, 34 and 35, is where we're picking up the likely additional debt funding necessary. So we talked about the 27 million for the public works facility. And then in the outer year, we have the potential, I mean, obviously, this has not been memorialized or affirmed in any official way, but the potential for what could be another bond referendum. So it's about a 90 million, $95 million program. It will get revisited, but you'll also notice when you look at line 20 and line 36, every year is balanced. The projects that have been identified, there's funding sources available. It's balanced year by year, it's balanced in the aggregate, which is not something we always see. A lot of times you see the top half of the page, but you've got nothing on the bottom half. We'll sort of figure it out as we go and that's not been your approach for a long, long time. And this was a very well-received conversation that we had with the bond rating agencies. So at least from where I sit, I know you've got a lot of decisions to make on the project. Your big-picture financial plan is all very much intact. It's all very doable from your capacity perspective with your policies, from the debt affordability perspective. And I do believe there's some places within this plan that will give you some flexibility for potential unanticipated events. Happy to answer questions and I'll sit tight till the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Ted. All right, I'm going to just cover the last two slides and then we can jump back to the front or we can address questions at that point. But I just want to remind you, the last meeting that we had and we talked about funding models for this project is you have other resource strategies that Town Manager Zudima was alluding to earlier in his front-loaded summary, is these are other things that are potentially at play that could come forward and be able to backfill so it alleviates the use of other cash reserves. So we can continue to manage this, is my point, with these opportunities. They're not something I can realistically, as a budget person, say that we can appropriate and reasonably assume right now, but they are things that are in the short-term, immediate future that we may become more aware that we can. So I just want to put those out there. If you remove something like this, like this sign, for example, it's something that Singh and Company and Clearscape actually said, we could come back to you later and say, okay, let's try to put this in. We have this particular resource. Get to a place where you're comfortable about activating and funding this project so you can take the next big step. And that's what it's all about. And yet, and what we're presenting to you in a funding solution between the spectrum of 19 million and 18 million is you have the ability to do that. And we have the ability to do that and still be able to look at the five-year picture and create a reasonable funding solution for the other projects as well. Now, that's not written in stone and we don't know what tomorrow brings, but what we understand today is you have a five-year picture, a five-year CIP plan. The other thing is, talking with Singh and Company about the ability for you to mitigate risks, that's something we have to account for when it comes to projects. And you automatically build that into your cost estimating with the contingencies, for example. There's a number of contingencies that are included in the cost estimates that allow you to have those mitigating factors immediately in this project. Another thing that Ted was talking about and I was referring to is we have a debt model that's very conservative. You have revenues that are forecasted in that five-year picture and leveraging your CIP and aligning resources, they're all funded and aligneded to resources in a conservative The other thing is having some ability to maintain a reserve, those reserves, to have that flexibility. Again, on the spectrum of 19 to 18, you have the ability to do that. The other one, and I'll just talk real briefly about this, and if we need to go into explanation of what it's really about, I'll have to pull Ted up here. But when you issue bonds, you have the potential, if it sells above face value of that bond when it's marketed, you have the potential to earn something called bond premiums. Now, I usually don't like to account for that. I usually like to be conservative and say, okay, let's go to market and sell it. But that's an opportunity that could present when we sell, that we could recognize additional And then, of course, you have the sponsorship opportunities that could not only help you mitigate capital cost, but could actually help you with operational cost. These are mitigating factors that you have that we could utilize. So I'll pause there for questions, or would you like me to cover the operational cost?
I don't think we have questions. If you want to just sort of briefly tell us this, it sounds like we're in good shape. But if you want to just affirm that and give us some comfort level and then we'll have to share with you how we're not concerned, otherwise the assumption is we're good.
The difference on the spectrum from 19 million to 18 million is the level of reserve money that you draw forward. So at 19 million, you have reduced the draw and it creates some additional flexibility back into your projection on a conservative model. At 18 million, it completely eliminates or alleviates the draw or the need on reserves. So it's totally a parkland pavement and lieu and other resources and mainly a bond or debt-leveraged model at this point. But that's the only real difference between 18 and 19, is a billion dollars gets put back in the coffers, that's cash reserves, to be able to give you that flexibility in the future.
But you indicated there's still some flexibility even within the 19.
Even within the 19, on a conservative model.
Questions from council? That was a really good presentation. Thank you to both you and Ted.
Thank you, Ted. All right.
You want to bring us home?
Yes, sir. So thank you for your patience, thank you for your time. So what our intention would be is to come back on the 27th. We will have the cleaned up. Here's what you're willing to delay or remove from the project. And again, we anticipate, based on what you've talked about tonight, that we land maybe just under 19 million. That's inclusive of construction costs, contingencies, and as well as the 4% project management fees. So that's all in, just under 19. Ted and Jeanie have shown you that, in short, we can afford 19. It does not put us out of your own policies, it does not threaten our bond rating, we're solid in that regard. And again, you've heard it, but I'll say it one more time, we structure this very conservatively so, you know, that we don't anticipate challenges in that regard. So what we will do is come back to you with that revised potential budget and clarifying what's being held out of it that could be added back later, depending on some of these other funding sources that could materialize. And then we will have that in the development agreement for you to consider approving. So that the actual structure of where the money comes from will be roughly laid out in that development agreement, but you've seen a clear description here of what those sources will be.
So that was really great, all about the financials and stuff like that. Do any council members have any questions?
Yes.
In regards to the development agreement itself? You said it earlier, so I'll recognize you first and then Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson, please.
Yes, and Brandon, you and I talked about this on Monday, so I want the Singh Development crew to hear me say this too. We've spent a lot of time working on the public portions of this project, which clearly are important to us, the park, the infrastructure, the road system. But we haven't gone back and revisited the look and feel of that whole block. And when that look and feel came to us a couple of, well, months ago now, I and others had concern about that. And we have not revisited that. So I still have concern about that. And so you all probably have heard me say this before, I've been working decades for this project. I am in favor of this project and I want to see it happen and I want to be here to put a shovel in the ground. But this is a showstopper for me. I need to either see and feel and understand what's really going to be there, or somewhere in the development agreement, there needs to be some mechanism where council gets to weigh in and have some say in that. And again, I'm not saying that this, you know, I'm not putting the brakes on anything, but it is a, maybe not a showstopper, but a show slower downer for me. So that's critically important because we've made some commitments to the public and we were going to make sure that this all fit in, not only to the town center, but to the surrounding community. And I have not seen that yet. Now, I have great confidence that we will see that, but I, again, I need to either see it or it needs to be somehow a part of the development agreement.
Yes, you will see that back. I don't know that you will see that back by the 27th. I believe Singh's been focused more on this portion of the project than they have been on updating the visuals for the multifamily. But you would, we can, I can look through the development agreement and confirm for you tomorrow what the language is in there specifically that speaks to their portion of the development. It's not a specific approval by council as far as that design, but you certainly, Singh has consistently said that they're partners, they want to let you see that, they want to make sure that you're comfortable with that. So I think they've made that commitment to us. I don't think I'm speaking Todd's agreement, obviously, no. So absolutely, that'll come back to you. And I can talk to them after the meeting and confirm with you when you should expect to see some sort of revision on what that, particularly what the Town Hall Drive facade will look like on that multifamily.
And, well, and Jeremiah too, quite frankly, not just Town Hall.
Yeah, they'll respond to all the feedback they got from you looking at that, all four sides of the multifamily.
Okay, so I, okay, so this will come to us next meeting then.
I will have to check with them to see if they're ready to give you updated facade information. The development agreement, the request for you to approve the development agreement will come the 27th.
I understand that.
But I hear what you're saying is you would prefer to see...
So you can tell me if I'm wrong, but this is kind of our last step where we get to approve anything. And so that concerns me that that still is hanging out there and that has not come back to council.
So I would say this is...
So that would concern me in two weeks if I don't have a, if I'm not confident, have a confident answer to that question.
Yeah, so this is not your last option to review. This is your decision-making around what we believe the core of this project and sort of the basic what's in and what's out now based on costs. So you still will have the opportunity to have that multifamily come back and for you to see that. The signing of the development agreement doesn't cease any of that. The signing of the development agreement, again, is that framework for what the agreement looks like, how the public-private partnership functions, what the money looks like going in, but it doesn't end. There's still going to be refinement to this project, there's still going to be refinement to what they're working on, and that will continue to come back to you through the fall before anything is technically finalized on design and certainly what the look of the multifamily will be.
And we will have that say. That's what, I think that's the piece I'm not getting comfortable with.
Yes, you will have, Singh has indicated they want to revise that, they've heard your concerns and they are very open to hearing additional feedback from you to reach a point where you would be comfortable and they feel they could build what you'd be comfortable with.
I don't, okay.
I've been there. Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson, followed by Mayor for Tim Garamella, please.
Thank you. I think I'm going to try to elaborate a little bit more. So I think it's really important that we look at this project as a whole. We've been kind of digging down into the town green and looking at the different features and the costs that the town incur. But the look and feel of this project is not just the multifamily building, it's also the Foxglove extension, it's also the transition from Jeremiah into the town center area, it's the transition from Town Hall Drive going back to Carolina. Do we have, you know, what kind of authority does the town have about different aspects of the Foxglove extension, look and feel, the transition from the Jeremiah community to the town center? It's not just the multifamily, but it's also about the roads and the landscape, the streetscape and the elevations that may or may not be impacted from the current state?
So you have, you have full control of what we are funding and that includes anything infrastructure-wise, that includes Foxglove extension, that includes all of that because you're paying for that. So that's all part of our contribution through the infrastructure. So you, as a council, have control of what that looks like. As far as the building itself for the multifamily, you certainly have input into that and Singh has expressed a willingness and a desire, I would say, to work with you to get that to where you're comfortable with how it appears as part of the overall project.
But there's also multi-use buildings and some of the cottages, is that also something that we would be able to react to and provide feedback?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. I did receive an email from an individual about their concern about the Foxglove extension and wasn't seeing the value of that, but I was very clear that that allows us for additional programming and different features of that. So we might need to have more education for the communities that are near the town center in the near future and then continuing along the journey as we progress the project.
Yeah, that's also part of our plan is once we had gotten through this, so we know what we're showing them as far as what's being recommended by the development agreement, certainly to continue to meet with the Jeremiah neighborhood. And so we have a representative here tonight. But, you know, continuing to reach out to others that will be impacted by this or have interest in this. So certainly, I think this is a step, the signing of the development agreement is a step in that direction where we generally know, here's what's going to be in this project right now, we'll go out and share that with the public, educate them, you know, listen to feedback.
Could the council receive a current draft of that agreement prior to the meeting at the end of this?
Absolutely, yeah. And it will change only minutely from the most recent one you were provided, but absolutely, we'll get that to you this week. And there's just, there may be two or three small tweaks that Lori's looking on that are literally paragraphs that we can update for you. But yeah, the document is ready to go, we just have to update what the numbers look like for our costs based on what our conversation has been.
Okay, I'd like to have a good read-through because not just the cost, but I'm looking at, you know, the balance of the feedback for each, you know, area as well. It's important just to understand roles and responsibilities. It's important just to understand roles and responsibilities, if you will.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Pretem Garamella, please.
So Brandon, a couple of things for me, the development agreement, does it encompass the timeframe also when they will be built? Or is it like a question like
Yes, there, there is a preliminary construction schedule that's included with the development agreement as one of the attachments that shows, you know, the working time of that schedule, and, and based on, you know, a spring around breaking and moving forward.
So let me restate, there's three components for me, the Town Center green, the apartment complex along, along with the parking deck, and then what we were talking about, the marbles and the townhomes at the back.
Yeah, so that, that block is not moving forward right now.
So why not? Because when we initially said it was shown to us, we went to the whole block of what the apartment should be, should be lease or sell, and we did all those things. So when did that not happen?
That, we haven't, we've been sharing that that was a Phase 1B for, I would say, over a year, and that's in part because we're trying to work with marbles to see if that can materialize or not.
But I thought marble is pretty much dead now.
I'm sorry?
I thought marble is pretty much dead.
No, we don't, I wouldn't say that. We're still in conversation and still trying to pursue that with them.
Okay.
I'm not ready to say it can't happen.
Okay, it's fine, like, but that is only the front. What about the back? You know, nothing is stopping from having the townhomes at the back, too.
So we, again, that, we've defined that as Phase 1B, so that we
And what is a 1B timeframe like?
We don't have a timeframe right now. That partly depends on the conversation with marbles, and then if it's marbles, you know, we need to work with them to understand how much space they would potentially take there, and how that funding model would look, and what the cost associated with that be for, for not only the construction, but also potentially leasing it and, and the operation of that sort of facility down the road. And then depending on the space they may or may not take would dictate what was available space-wise for townhomes around that in the future.
So, I know it's too late, but I don't want to go in circles, but is that the only option? Like, you know, that we are waiting on marbles for almost two years now?
No, it's not the only option. That's, that's the best option in, in our mind, and I think collaboratively, and talking through it as far as activating the space, marbles is by far the best option. It lines up well with our town green, it lines up well with the library, it, it all works nicely together and would be a huge draw for the area. So that's our, our primary focus. But yes, I'm, I'm trying to reach to Jonathan Frederick, actually, now, I've got emails out to him to try to meet, to understand what their progress is with this hub-and-spoke concept and where we fit into that, or if they're ready to say we don't. But I've not had them say we don't fit yet.
Okay. And going back to what Liz was saying, the development agreement, has it any teeth to the apartment complex or no?
I'm sorry, it has any?
Any, like, like a language about the apartment complex? It doesn't talk about it at all?
It does. The development agreement speaks to what the expectations are that Singh will develop, and that includes multifamily and a parking deck that they will provide, and then, of course, we'll lease some spaces for them. So the, the development agreement does establish what the expectations are for the construction.
In a, in a broad sense, not, not
Correct.
Not like what she was talking about, where it's detailed enough to say, because honestly, we are seeing for a single M is thirty-five thousand dollars. So we can say all that we had to say, but I want to see from there, and are they ready to pick that? You know, what we talked about, when we had, and they had good reasoning. I still remember the gas line going underneath, that's the reason you don't have, you know, the patios and all those things.
Yeah, there's some challenges.
Like, a lot of challenges, and they have done an excellent job, but some of the feedback never came back to us. So I don't want to be like, just in like a dry box of two-fifty apartments and parking when we have exposed us to how the building looks, too. So it would be good as a refresher. Where are we with that also? That's
Okay, so I'm not seeing any other, any other questions. Sounds like there's a desire to have some kind of update on what we saw visually, the vision for Singh's portion, if possible. Otherwise, you're bringing back pretty much everything that we went over tonight on the twenty-seventh with the expectation, I think, that we're, have consensus around it, and that we're comfortable with the nineteen million, is what I've heard. So moving on to the next item, if that's okay with everybody, it's time for council and manager comments, and I'm thinking we're going through this pretty quickly, but we'll see. Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretem Garamella.
No comments, mayor, thank you.
Mayor Pretem Garamella, followed by Councilmember Johnson?
Oh, I had two, I'll, I'll save them for the next time, no comment.
I have a comment, I'll save it for the next time. Councilmember Robati?
Absolutely not, thank you.
Councilmember Fender?
No comment.
Councilmember Rao?
Excellent. Town Manager Zudima, anything for the good of the order?
Just very quickly, two things. One is that Apex has reached, the town of Apex has reached out to do a joint meeting again, they've suggested a date in September, so I'm going to send you some information about what that could look like, query you about what topics might look like, and confirm interest in doing that again, just so when you see that email, that's where that's coming from. And then, secondly, want to share with you that we have an HR director. So we, I have hired a gentleman by the name of David Hacker. David is coming to us from Ohio, where he currently works for West Virginia University Medicine as the vice president for HR. Prior to that, he was the human resources director for the city of Wheeling, West Virginia. He's got about fifteen years plus in human resources, has an MPA, and he has already purchased a home here, and he and his wife Allison and their children, Ashlyn and Emma, excuse me, Ellie, sorry, not Emma, Ellie, will be here. We expect a start date, ideally the first week of September.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion from Councilmember Robati and a second from Mayor Pretem Garamella. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously.